Twenty twelve, Pennington County Commission meeting to order. And we will stand for a moment of silent reflection and ask Commissioner Buskerud to lead the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone wish to remove any items from the agenda? Or to add any?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holliday is your office manager. I would like to request that you remove item number eight from the consent calendar as we did it last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other changes for the agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I should move to approve it with the removal of number eight.
Second. Motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We move to the consent agenda. Item eight that was removed is deleted. So we have items five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Minutes of the regular meeting, approval of vouchers, acknowledgement of a disinterment permit, request to surplus handguns for trade-in, approve the agreement between the county and Bradsky Road District, approve application to occupy right-of-way for bicycle ride, and approval of the South Dakota DOT Joint Powers Agreement for weed-spraying services. Any questions or comments about any of those? Chairman, entertain the motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're now on item thirteen, the twenty-eleven financial and compliance audit, State Department of Legislative Audit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody should have a letter of our engagement letter, entrance conference letter, kind of outlines.
Yes.
Outlines what, or it's basically the same letter I've given to you guys in the past, kind of outlines what our audit's all about and what procedures we go through and everything. Just want to stop, let you know, I've been here for about a week, week and a half. Al got here this week. We've got a third person here this week, so hopefully we aren't going to be here for four months like we were last year. I was pretty much here by myself last year. Al was finishing up over at School of Mines and didn't get over here as soon as he thought he was going to, so we're hoping by the end of the month, first of June, we'll be done. So hopefully the report will get out a little sooner this year than what happened last year. So, a couple of questions I've got, that we've always done a schedule of revenues and expenditures for the JSC operation and included that as part of the audit report. I was wondering, I'm assuming you guys still want that done again? That JL compact's still going and everything?
Yes, yes.
And we'll include that. That's been a separate item. I think when we've run our bill and everything, it takes, I don't know, ten to fifteen hours, I think is all it takes to do the testing we do over there and put that schedule together. And then we, I think that gets charged out separately. So, the only other thing I had that I was going to bring up is we'll probably be following up on the issues we had with the state's attorney's office last year. As far as, other than that, I'm thinking the audit will probably be similar to what we've had in the past. If you guys don't have any questions, I will get out of your hair. I'll leave the original, I've got the original letter. I'll leave it with Karen. Need the board chair's signature on it, and I'll need to get Julie's signature on it. So, other than that, I don't really have anything else. Just want to stop, let you know we are here, see if you guys have any questions. Working down in that same room down there at the other end of the auditor's office. If something comes up, you guys got a question about something, don't hesitate to stop by and talk with us. Roger's going to be here, the other guy that came out from Mitchell that's helping us this year, he's been getting here, and I'm usually here too by about seven o'clock. He's working some extra hours. We had a key to get him. Last night he said he worked till seven. He's working some long hours. I think he's only working four days a week, and hopefully in three weeks he'll be done. So, that's kind of our plan right now, anyway. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to authorize the JSC and to the chair's signature on the letter?
That would be my motion.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is a lien release, item fourteen.
Hi, Erica Olson, appearing as counsel for the attorney of Jeffrey Heron. And this is the personal representative of Jeffrey Heron's estate, his mother, Grace Heron. We are asking for the burial lien to be released. The estate is pretty much insolvent. I think we've provided you with an inventory that shows what the current assets are. The realtor for the estate, Judy Rhodey, has found a buyer for us, and the second mortgagie has agreed to a short sale. They're not going to get anything from this sale. That's Black Hills Federal Credit Union. If we can't get the lien released, this sale won't go through, and then we'll have to have this estate open for another six months so it can go through foreclosure. And we would just like to be able to close the estate, and if we can get the lien released immediately, we can still salvage this sale.
Any comments or questions?
Family allowance, what's that?
The only heir to Jeffrey's estate is his minor son, Riley Heron. If there are, there is a small amount of personal property, which we would try to save for Riley, if that, if that is possible. And by state statute, you can claim up to eighteen thousand dollars. There certainly isn't that amount of personal property in the estate. But that would allow us, if there is some personal property, to, to save that for the minor son before the other bank gets...
Any further comments or questions?
Well, I noticed, Mr. Chair, that the attorneys got paid quite regularly down through this thing. And I guess the taxpayers probably come last in the whole. It bothers me a little.
You know, I have offered to Grace that for the closing of the state, I'm going to waive the remainder of my fees, because this, this estate just needs to get done and closed.
In your opinion, are the burial expenses foreclosedable?
Are they foreclosedable?
You said it might take six months to foreclose. Are they foreclosedable?
Um, I mean, they would be ahead of the first mortgage lien, I believe. But I, I would, I would, you know, want your county attorney's opinion on that. I'm sure they would have an opinion about that.
So they would, if we're ahead of the first mortgage, then there would be money, if you foreclose, to pay this? Because the first, well, we'd be first. I think I'm going to make a motion to postpone this to find out the answer to that question. From our attorney, I'm postponing it until next meeting.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Holloway.
So when, when is this sale due to finalize?
Immediately. It was actually supposed to close last week, and when we found out about the burial lien, it was postponed. So the, the buyer is, is waiting for your answer. So I'm not sure if we will still have a buyer if we postpone it till the next meeting.
Is there, is there a way to remove the lien from the property but still keep it in place so that as you finish this whole estate, if, if there does become funds that could cover that, we could still have it available?
At this time, you're trying to...
Have the lien, the burial lien released.
Trying to get a house sale.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody, maybe someone trying to get a mortgage.
Well, there's, there's two mortgages in place. The first mortgage is initiating foreclosure proceedings, and the second mortgagie has agreed to a short sale. So if we can go with the seller, then we won't have to wait the full period for the foreclosure, and we'll be able to close the estate sooner.
And you can subrogate your lien, meaning basically drop it down one rung on the ladder, so that whatever else might be out there, whether it be a mortgage, that would have a priority. And an accounted lien that was earlier in time, you can do that, release it, compromise it, you can do a lot of different things with it.
If we, if we subrogate it to the first mortgage holder, then our, once they've sold the house, and then they start trying to identify what other assets might be in that estate to try to close it out, our lien would still be then in the mix?
I believe it wouldn't be, because it's still against the property, it hasn't been, it hasn't been settled, it hasn't been paid off, or it hasn't been released.
Well, the, the property would have been sold. So, I mean, essentially, I think the county could make a claim in the estate.
It would just be, it'd have to be sold, subject to that lien.
Yeah. Would, would that work for you, to get this house sale going?
Um, I don't think the seller would take it with this lien on it.
Well, but there wouldn't be a lien on, on the house, would there?
On part of the real property.
Okay. So there's, there's no way to get the lien off the house and still keep it with the estate that you're aware of, Holloway, huh?
I'm not familiar with, I mean, I'm not familiar with, if somebody had a brilliant, clever idea on how to structure that, and make it legal, I'd be glad to listen. I'm not familiar with that process.
In, in the past, the board has released liens from a piece of property but left the lien against the name. They have done that in the past, has set precedence.
Would that, would that work for you? If we released it against the property?
Then the sale could go forward, and then if there are, if there are remaining assets in the estate, the county would be entitled to a share of them.
Since, since you're handling the estate, would you keep, would you keep us in that mix?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, if, if the county made a claim, a continuing claim...
But not if you're, there's not going to be any money if you're going to continue the family allowance at eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, I would want to try to negotiate with the county, because burial expenses do, are a priority expense in, in the probate of an estate.
This is a little bit different information, because I, my understanding was there would be no money at all. So that's why I assumed that the release was what was going to be discussed here. But if there's money, then sure.
Well, and we don't know how much money, I don't think anybody knows for sure how much money is going to be left available. And, and so I, I would make a substitute motion to release the lien against the, the house, but keep it with the, with the estate. And would ask you to come back to us with, with an outline of the, the financials, and see if we can't get it paid out of the estate.
Does that seem okay, Chris?
Or at least a settlement?
Or a settlement. I mean, you negotiate with it.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Will that work for you in this?
We would come back after the house is sold and see if we have anything that we can pay towards the burial expenses. So we would negotiate with them later. Does that seem reasonable? But they would release the lien now, so the sale of the house...
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to vote for it, but I don't like it. I think we're going to get zero out of this deal.
Any other comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the substitute motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Pass four to one. Thank you. Next item is a request for sponsorship of a sign for the nineteen seventy-two flood memorial, fortieth anniversary. Dr. Lidle, is he here?
Here he is, apparently. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess I can talk a little bit about this. I was at the last meeting of the memorial committee, and it came up they had one sign left, and they, and Dr. Lidle had said that the city got involved in this for one of their signs. And he asked the crowd if there's, that, what about the county? Would the county be in on it? And I said, so, the only thing I could say about it is you should come down and approach the county commission to buy one of the signs at a thousand dollars, sponsorship, what the Rapid City did. The Central Stage Fair has also taken one. I think there's going to be fourteen signs, directional signs telling about things that happened in different locations during the flood, at different locations in town. And they'll be stretched out across the bike paths from up above Canyon Lake, all the way down the other side of the fairgrounds. So that's basically what it's all about.
Any, anyone else in the audience that wishes to comment on this? The check, if, if approved, would be to the Black Hills Community Foundation, fortieth flood anniversary, fortieth anniversary flood. I guess the question I would have is, where would this money come from? What, what fund or?
It'd have to come out of the general fund, I presume.
I'm going to make a motion to send them a check for a thousand dollars out of our contingency fund.
Is there a second?
That might not fly here.
I'll second it for discussion.
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and that's fine. You actually can't spend money directly out of the contingency, so include it in there. You might want to approve a contingency transfer for a thousand dollars to the commission's budget, and then we spend out of that one.
Or just have our professional services line item out of the commissioner's budget.
We've got money in our budget to pay for it.
Absolutely.
I'd request the motion maker to...
Yes.
...amend his motion to pay it out of the county commission's budget.
I would be most happy to do that.
Is Secretary Straight with what we mean?
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
You know, signs always have to be maintained. How is that going to happen? Are we going to be responsible for maintenance down the road, or?
No, we're not going to be, we're not going to be involved in anything other than the sponsorship of the sign. And as of my understanding, the, the city will take care of those things.
It's my understanding they're going to, they're going to turn all these signs over to the city's parks department.
Yep.
And, and they're a sign that's going to show what this area was like prior to the flood. You can see what it's like after the flood. I think they're going to have some pictures of the flood, and they're going to tell how many people died within that section of the, of the, of the creek. So I, I think it's appropriate the county participate in this. It's a, it was a, quite a disaster for our community at the time, and, and so I think it's an appropriate expenditure of a thousand dollars.
As long as Jerry's going to take care of it, I, we're good.
Any further comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the Black Hills Speedway malt beverage license.
Good morning. I'm hearing a lot of comments up here about how you guys are spending money. I'd like to help you out with a little bit of revenue by allowing this malt license to go through. If we don't allow a contingency on the malt license, and what I mean by that is, when I ran Speedway in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, I was doing a lease-to-purchase. The gentleman that owned the property leased it to another individual in two thousand ten. The property was then sold to another individual that owns the property as commercial property, and an individual has ran that property as a racetrack for the person that owns it in the two thousand eleven season. He filled out the malt license as a leaser, and my understanding is when you have a lease and you no longer have a lease, you have no rights to that malt license. So I have filled out a malt license form with Vicki, and I talked with Carol Empire at the Department of Revenue, and she said that the county commissioners have the authority to do what, you know, that county wants to do, that they have the authority to, to make this happen or not happen. So if we don't get the malt license, we're really not going to be able to open. Therefore, there is no tax revenue until the time that their court case goes through. So if you would just have some power to give us a malt license for the interim between now and the June court trial between the two parties, and then if one party wins, you can take the malt license away from me, because I will have no rights to the property then. If the individual that I have a lease from, and you can look at my lease, Vicki's got a copy.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Would you identify yourself?
Oh, Bill Keaster, Bill Keaster, I am the leaser of Black Hills Speedway, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to do that. But I, I do have a lease, if you guys wanted to look at it, and it's a signed lease, and Vicki has a copy of this. So therefore, if I do not have rights to the property after the June twelfth court date, then automatically I would lose the lease, and automatically I would lose the malt license. So that is my case to you this morning.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to ask Jay about, where would the county be, Jay, in, in this? If we take away this malt beverage license from one person, give it to another right in the middle of a court trial, what liability does that have on the county?
My advice, frankly, to the commission would be to not involve yourself in the midst of this pending litigation.
Thank you very much.
My understanding is, is the, the court will be deciding the rights of the parties amongst each other, which will also have an impact on whether or not Mr. Keaster has any rights on that property. That trial will be the eleventh and twelfth of June. We have also talked to Carol Logan at the Department of Revenue, and maybe there was some misunderstanding when Mr. Keaster talked to her, but she has to follow the law too, and you cannot issue two malt beverage licenses to the same property. Right now, the one held by, I believe it's Mr. Lebig...
Lebig.
...is still a valid license as far as the state is concerned, and they could not issue, no matter what action the commission took today, the state couldn't issue a second one to be sitting there at the same time. So at some point, will one go away and another one be available? Possibly. Will the one that's there get renewed? Possibly. If the court ruled in favor of the owner of the property and they terminated whatever lease, there might, the court might find to exist, and they could kick the one party out, and then in would come Mr. Keaster. I mean, there's a lot of different options that the court's going to have to consider, and then we don't even know how the court would rule. Might be some kind of bifurcated thing. We just don't know. So my advice would be to not engage yourself in the middle of this process until the court has announced a decision.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question before you make that decision?
Yes, may I?
I have been talking with the DAV, Disabled American Veterans, and they did some stuff for us in the past. Would this also pertain to them doing a temporary malt beverage license at that site, and they would get the proceeds?
They already got one license on the property.
I guess I don't know enough about the temporary license issue to be able to tell you for sure.
I know you just...
But you already said, Jay, that would, would a temporary be the same as a permanent one, that...
You would think logically it should be, but, you know, I mean, I honestly...
Should we?
Don't know that off the top. The other one, I know off the top of my head, but, and I wouldn't think they would issue a temporary one either, because that would kind of defeat the purpose of having two licenses operating at the same time, even though it's a short period.
Could we check into that temporary to see what the guidelines are for it?
Mr. Chair, you know, Bill, you've been here before in a similar situation, when you leased before there was an issue and...
With the fireworks, yeah. I didn't get to...
No, no, with the fireworks. You had, remember, you had to make an agreement with the person who held the license to operate till such time as your license could be issued, and...
That is correct, but there was one difference. That person had rights to the property, because it was a contract for deed, and state law has a different situation for contracts for deeds and for leases. And I was under the same situation in two thousand nine, when I held the malt license till two thousand ten, and when my lease expired, even though the malt license was two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and it would run through June thirtieth, since I didn't have any rights to the property, because I hadn't, I did not have the lease anymore, therefore, the malt license was void, because I didn't have rights to the property. There's two different situations.
But my point is, you did make an agreement with the holder of, of the license at the time. Can you somehow make an agreement with Mr. Lebig to run that? Because they ran the concession for a while. And then when you could get your paperwork through and get your malt license, then you took over concession. And I'm wondering, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to vote to give you one. I'll be straight with that right now, because I don't want to get messed up in your, in this court situation. The county has no business, in my opinion, doing that. But what I'm trying to offer you is some kind of alternative, and can Mr. Lebig run the concession until such time as you guys get this squared away? Similar to what you did before, because you kind of had some problems along the line of history of problems.
My understanding is he's not willing to do that. But there, but the thing is, it's two different situations, and I was told by the, I believe it was you, back in two thousand ten, that I wasn't able to possess that malt license anymore, because I had no rights to the property anymore. And it's the same situation now. He leased it...
It's not, it's not the same situation. A lease and a contract for deed both allow for an interest in real property. Right now, the question is, is that lease valid or not? And that's what the court has to decide. It may well be valid. To say it's not, that's why they're upstairs in the courtroom. So it's no different. There was litigation back then, until that issue got settled. There's litigation now, and it will get settled.
Yep.
There's really no difference.
Yep.
Commissioner Holloway.
When did you, when did you need the license to be in, in effect? When is, when is your opening?
Well, it was for Friday the fourth. It's Friday the fourth, but I know that would be impossible. But for the following Friday on the eleventh, so what we're saying is, our patrons are going to come to a facility that's been there in this community for sixty-three years, and I got to wait until this is all over. I mean, I might be mistaken, but I know what Carol told me in, in peer.
Well, the only thing I could say is, obviously, the, the soonest, if in fact, we could issue the temporary to the DAV, the soonest that could happen would be at the next county commission meeting.
Okay.
So the only lifeline that I could throw out to you would be to work with the state's attorney's office, so we could verify whether or not that could actually happen. If that can't happen, then I think you're out of luck.
And that's what I'm asking you, is if there is a slim chance, I'd rather have a slim chance than no chance.
That's the only one that I can see that could possibly work, and so...
So what I'll do is I'll have HJ from the DAV come down and fill out the application, and we can go from there.
Before you go through that process, I think we should have the state's attorney, Between now and whenever they would need to fill out an application, DAV, could you check to see if it's even valid? Because if, if they, if it's the same scenario that you can issue two licenses to the same premises, if that holds true with this temporary, then there's no reason to have it even on the agenda next week, or the next time? Or do you guys already know the answer to that question?
We could possibly find out before the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to postpone this until such time... I'd make a motion to postpone this until such time the state's attorney can find out the legal answers to this, whether it's at this meeting or to be put on the meeting for the next agenda.
Is there a second?
One second.
Motion and a second.
Thank you.
Postpone, and I guess, just to comment, a question I have, and we've gone through this discussion, and in the paperwork that I have, I have not seen a formal application. And so we just kind of exercised the issue, and we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item is the Rapid City Greenway Trails and Pedestrian Facility Plan, Pennington County Fairgrounds, CTEC.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ted Schultz with CTEC Engineering Services. Our company was hired as a consultant by the South Dakota Department of Transportation and the city of Rapid City to design a greenway path extension, and I've got a six-page handout that I presented to you. I do have Department Head of the Parks and Rec Department, Jerry Cole, in the audience, as well as Rod Johns with the City Public Works Department here also. This is a project that is tied to the work that's going on in Founder's Park area that you've probably seen along Omaha Street. The city and the DOT have combined some funds to facilitate this project, primarily with South Dakota DOT enhancement grants and federal highway funding, along with 2012 matching funds. It's about a $2.3 million project. The area that we're discussing today, and what I'd like to do is basically provide this as an informational to the commission, and answer any questions you might have. We've worked closely with Ron Jeffries and Mike Cool from Fairgrounds and the County Building Department, appreciate all of their work and their meetings, several meetings to discuss the scope of the work and the alignments and so forth. What we're really talking about is a bike path connection from the intersection of La Crosse Street and San Francisco Street over to Cherry Avenue Bridge, and that length of bike path is about 1,430 feet. Currently, there is no bike path in that area at all. The bike path actually ends onto San Francisco Street, and it's a fairly dangerous area just to end a bike path. There's no pedestrian crossing on the road of any kind, and so this, this project would reroute the bike path around the street, provide some guard rail to protect that bike path at the curve of San Francisco Street, as shown on page four of this handout. We've got some plan sheets there. We've got a pretty sharp curve where San Francisco and La Crosse Street come together, so that area would have a guard rail placed along the street, and this bike path would connect the area, as I said, from the end of the bike path in front of the Fairgrounds Office over to Cherry Avenue. And so that's going to be a nice enhancement for the community, for the county and the city, and there's an easement in place that allows this path to go through the fair property. The contractors, RCS Construction on the project, they are proposing to begin work fairly soon in May, and their completion date is July 27th here in about six to eight weeks. If everything goes well, we're going to, you know, be done in six weeks or so, in plenty of time before the fair happens this year. So at that point, I guess I'll open up to any questions you might have.
What happens when you get to Cherry, the Cherry Creek, or Cherry Street Bridge?
We actually, there is a path along the bridge itself, there's a five-foot path on the bridge, and so we'll connect to that path, and then we'll connect on to the existing city system that continues on.
It's already in place?
It's already in place, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I believe this was talked about back in 1985, and the county commissioner at that time gave the city an easement to do this project back then. Why it took this long to get it done, I'm not sure, because it should have been done a long time ago. But anyway, I'm not against the project, I think it's probably a good idea, and I will support it. I just want you to know that when I left the meeting the other day at the fairgrounds, I came out of the parking lot of the fairgrounds out onto San Francisco Street, and the next guy around the corner tried to run me down, went off the edge of the road and over into the grass, and that's what we just talked about in that meeting before, that, the safety of that corner, so.
Do we, are we in a position of needing a motion to approve this, or is this informational?
Not on my end. If you'd like to, that's fine, it's really informational for us at this point.
Just to get it in the minutes, I'd make a motion to acknowledge the project, Pedestrian Facilities Project, Rapid City Greenway Trails to County owned Fairgrounds.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item, item 18, Rapid City Library Liaison Updates.
Good morning, I'm Vera Cole, and I'm the new county liaison to the Rapid City Public Library Board, and I just have a brief report on statistics of use of the library by Pennington County residents. And first, I'll let you know that over the last year, there was a change in procedure at the library and how cards were renewed, so it may, you have to interpret the data cautiously. In the past, all cards expired in, at the end of a calendar year, so that every card came new every three years in January, and now cards are renewed based on whenever the patron has applied. So if you apply in June, it renews in June. So it skews the data a little bit in that in 2011, there would have been a lot of cards expire, and then a lot of people try to renew their cards. So, but overall, you see that the total number of Pennington County residents that are using the library facilities has increased by 3%. The number of new patrons that were added in the first quarter of 2012 over 2011 increased by 45%, and again, that may be skewed a little bit by the way the cards were renewed. But the amount of individual materials used by Pennington County residents has likewise continued to increase, and it's up 16% over last year, and most of that increase is accounted for by electronic media, ebooks and such. And if you look at the last graph there, you can see that it shows circulation since 2008, and it's just a steady increase since that time. So use is going up and up, and again, much of it is due to online and electronic materials.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Obviously, this is not just Pennington County residents, it's the ones that live outside of municipalities, is that the numbers that we're seeing? Because there must be more people, the people in Rapid City are in Pennington County too, so there must be more utilization than what we're seeing here.
I believe this is just non-Rapid City.
Everybody that's outside of your municipality in the county.
Might refer to him some, in some other manner.
Other than Pennington County residents, yeah.
I like to think that, I live in the city, and I like to think that I'm still in Pennington County.
Okay, we can do that. Good point.
Like, guarantee if Dolores were still with us, she'd be on her feet.
Well, you're probably doing okay for that, Ken. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vera.
Next item, items from the auditor.
Good morning, KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. We have two supplements that were posted for public hearing today. The first supplement request comes from the ITS Department, which is in the general fund, and Linda Anderson has outlined for the board some new off-site storage options and updating some software leases. There'll be some savings for what was previously spent, so the net amount that they were requesting from the assigned IT equipment fund balance, which is, been utilized for a number of years to have money available for large costs as they, as they come out of the IT department. The net amount is $30,858. I believe Linda is here, if the board has any questions regarding these purchases.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the supplement to the 2012 general fund ITS budget in the amount of $30,858 from the assigned IT equipment fund balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the supplement. Any further discussion? From the board, from the audience? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
The second supplement request comes from Sheriff Tom. It is in regard to a virtual server. The total cost estimated to be approximately $80,000. There's $20,000 available from the sheriff's office budget and $10,000 from buildings and grounds. They're asking for the remaining $50,000 to come from the assigned equipment reserve and be supplemented to the jail. And I believe Brian's here, no?
Any questions by the board? I think we had a conversation about this last meeting. Any comments or questions from the audience? Not, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the supplement of, to the 2012 general fund jail budget in the amount of $50,000 from the assigned equipment reserve fund balance.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, KJ. Next item is the Scenic Kanata Basin Ambulance District.
Yes, the petitions, please be advised that petitions requesting the organization of the Scenic Kanata Basin Ambulance District have been received, verified and filed. In my office, the minimum signature requirements for the organization election has been met. The legal is enclosed, motion to order that the election be held June 12th, 2012, between 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM at the Scenic Community Center for Determination of the Organization of the Scenic Kanata Basin Ambulance District, and that if this question for organization should pass, those present and eligible shall hold an immediate election for the first Board of Trustees for the newly organized district.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I would make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. And the secretary has the motion. Any comments or questions from the board, from the audience?
Miss?
I would just comment that the county auditor has become immersed in the ambulance issue.
I have.
And seems to have it well in control.
I hope so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The, I know that the wall ambulance is circulating the petition.
They have filed a petition.
Oh, they filed theirs?
Mm-hmm.
So do we need to do the same kind of a thing for them?
You will do that at the next meeting.
And I assume that they didn't include this area in theirs?
No, they did not.
Okay.
Any further comment? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items from the sheriff, Black Elk Mountain Pine Beetle Fire Preparedness Efforts.
Good morning, I'm Brian Mueller, Chief Deputy with the Pennington County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Tom is on his way in here, but he's running a little bit late, so I'll go through this with you this morning. We threw discussions on our informal Mountain Pine Beetle Committee, we've had several discussions about what we're doing in Pennington County and to be prepared for large-scale forest fires that we believe eventually will be a result of, of the devastation that's occurred in the Black Hills. So we wanted to come in this morning to brief you on an evacuation exercise that Pennington County Sheriff's Office and Pennington County Fire and several other public safety entities are holding on May 8th, and we drafted a letter that's outlined several different things that we've done, starting back in 2009, with evacuation tabletop exercises in 2010, and a large-scale disaster exercise last year in 2011, and be here to answer any questions that you might have in reference to our upcoming exercise that we're holding in two weeks.
Any questions by the commission?
Maybe just a comment. First of all, I really appreciate these guys doing that, it's tremendously important, and I, one of the things that I'd like to bring before the commissioners, the committee was talking about a follow-up exercise involving the commissioners, where we would go through the process of what happens for this type of disaster, on how we access funds, what our legal responsibilities are, how we can handle that sort of situation and understand it, all five of us, and I, and I'm hoping that you all would be interested in doing that. It shouldn't take a real long time, and certainly, we want to go ahead and have it well organized before we do this, but we are concerned that not only do the emergency response people need to know what they should do, but we as commissioners should know, and just kind of go through that process, and I'm just kind of wanting some feedback from you in the organization of that, if you want to go ahead with that. I would urge you to, but, you know, if you don't want to, then I guess we don't do that.
What's the wish of the commission?
Well, I think it's a good idea and would support putting something together with the appropriate people to determine what, how we access funds and what is available and, and what we would need to do when this fire happens. The other question I might have for Chief Deputy Mueller is, this is a tabletop exercise?
No, this is an actual in-the-field exercise that we're going to do.
Okay.
We're going to send our mobile command posts and several deputies, Rapid City Police Officers, South Dakota Highway Patrolmen, US Forest Service personnel, Denny's going to help us run the fire part of the exercise, and we're going to actually do a mock evacuation of all the residences and businesses along Old Hill City Road between Keystone and Hill City.
So you're going to engage the citizenry in those communities?
We are.
Okay.
And also tomorrow night, I'm on the agenda at the, or excuse me, Wednesday night at the agenda, the Keystone Council meeting to go up and visit with their community about the exercise, and then on the agenda on, I believe, May 15th in Hill City to go and visit with, with those folks about, about the exercise. We'll be done with it already, but our hope is to hold table, or community hall meetings in Keystone and Hill City in the next month, following the exercise, with members of our Pennington County Committee and public safety to be there to answer questions for the public also.
Will, will you be coming back to the board to talk about the results of your exercise?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, I appreciate that.
I'd also like to take an opportunity to thank Denny Gordon with County Fire for, for helping us through the sheriff's office, provide us with information, to provide our deputies with the right type of safety equipment to operate in an extreme fire situation that we do. A lot of times, when law enforcement responds to these for evacuations, they get themselves in situations that we're not used to dealing with. So Denny's helped us with some training and some equipment, and also search and rescue is stepping up and helping, helping us with some training for our deputies on the fire response also, so I'd like to thank those entities.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Getting back to Commissioner Troutman, a couple of weeks ago, I went to an emergency management course in peer for a day, and it was very, I learned a lot of that stuff.
Yeah.
And anyway, what they were talking about, and what I stayed after and talked to two or three of them for a- and talked to two or three of them for a while, about they want to get together a course like that, because this one was directed to emergency managers. They wanted to get together a shorter course, because I said, we're not going to get commissioners to sit for eight hours.
Right.
A shorter course just directed at commissioners just along the lines that you were talking about. So, I think I would suggest that if we're going to do that, maybe we get Dustin to get ahold of, of those people and see if they've developed that course yet, or if they'd be willing to, to do it as a test case, a test scenario for them. And they, they are most interested in doing that.
And I, I also talked to Dustin Willett two weeks ago about following up with, with the commission. We are going to, we're creating financial tracking sheets that we're going to run through this exercise also, and our plan is to get with the auditor after the exercise and then go through that educational process with the commission and emergency management to make sure that we're collecting the right type of documentation up front when one of these events happens, so we can get proper reimbursement on the backside.
And I, we went to that too. And one of the things I remember is some of the commissioners who were involved in the flooding last year talked about how important it was to understand that. And, and while ours may not be a flood, I think it's going to be just as devastating to have fires start. So, so I, I'll certainly, I mean, I, I guess I can take that on and, and make sure that that happens. And even, I guess my concern though is, is if they can't do it till August, we need to do it fairly soon.
And one of the instructors was, and I can't remember his name, Denny maybe knows it, was the emergency manager from Custer County. So, he, he's even close, the, that would be, he'd be probably interested in doing something.
Great, so I'll follow through, that seems to be a consensus.
Yes.
Brian, do you know if the, if the Forest Service is getting permission to actually fight the fire in the Black Hills Wilderness Area, or are they going to just let it burn?
I do think that they do have permission to go in certain parts of it and fight it. Maybe Denny knows.
So, it's already predetermined?
Yes and no.
It doesn't sound very promising to me. Because if they let that whole area just burn, you're going to have a hard time controlling it coming outside of those boundaries, because the fire's not going to know where the boundaries are.
In the, in the exercise that we had in 2010, they, they had a lot of their personnel down there, their higher-up personnel, and, and they did talk about going in and specifically attacking areas of that if that fire takes off. I don't, I've not had a specific conversation with them since that time.
Just a quick update, in fact, I got the email, I think, just last Friday. Forest Services is planning another one of their black elk wilderness exercises for, I don't even remember the date, I'll say either very late May or early June. And it's, it's like a tabletop-type exercise, so. But basically, no, they don't give a blanket approval either to fight it or not. They do that as a, as they see the smoke and what the, what the fire's doing, so.
When we see the smoke coming from up there with all those dry trees, the fire's going to be pretty big.
Well, wilderness areas have very specific rules, you know, passed by Congress, and there's only certain things they can do. So, it has to go through a process, but anyway.
One thing about it, my philosophy about this whole deal is that if we can't go in and fight the fire in the black elk and we should not also put out the house that's in there. We should leave that to its own problems also.
Do you, I guess, Denny, I would be interested in, in any, you know, I don't know if you're going to be at that tabletop that they're going to hold, or if you get any information on what their process is and getting that approved and how long, once the smoke is seen, how long does it take Congress to re, get back in session and vote on approving this?
Well.
Or whatever process they're going to use. I'd be interested in knowing that, because I, I do think it's something that, at least it's, that we should be concerned about.
And part of this is kind of a definition of, of going in and fighting the fire. If it's a very small fire that has occurred, they have some rules that they can go in, they can take hand tools only, handsaws, go in and, and, you know, using natural rocks and, and barriers contain the fire. But to send in dozers, heavy equipment, trucks, hundreds of crews and stuff, and go and start cutting fire lines in trees and stuff, that's a whole different part of that, of all that. So, I mean, there's a, there's, for lack of a better word, I'll call it a couple of layers or levels of, of fire suppression.
I'd be interested in knowing if they, if they got a plan to put that dozer circle around that, so that it can burn inside of it and not burn the rest of the Black Hills.
Yeah.
Now, there won't be much of a wilderness to go walk through after the fire gets done.
No, it'll be a black wilderness.
Not toasty critters out there probably, so.
Getting back to May 8th, I, I have a little difficulty understanding, and maybe I missed something, but if the commissioners are to be involved, when and where?
If, if the commissioners want to see part of that, we're not going to have a direct link to commission involvement for this. We're testing the actual evacuation up in the field. But if you want to come and see part of that, to get ahold of Sheriff Tom or I, and we can arrange to, to give you a tour of what we're doing.
What, on May 8th, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. And what we had talked about involving the commission on would be a, a separate exercise after May 8th to talk about disaster declarations and those types of things.
I guess I was kind of wondering if the commission needed to take action to designate one of their members to function in the manner that Bill Janklow used to function.
I don't think so. I'm not bulletproof.
Anyway, thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Okay. Items from Buildings and Grounds. Mike and Mike.
Good morning. Mike Cool with Buildings and Grounds. I just wanted to give the commission a update on the current projects that we have going on here as related to the county's expansion project efforts. Parking structure is nearing completion. If you notice that they're, they're nearly completed, the metal panel expand installation along the roof line of the building up there. That project is running behind schedule because of those metal panels and the length of time it took them to get them and fabricate them and have them placed and installed on the building, but.
How much is that costing them a day?
Costing them a day? The $250 is liquidated damages on the project. A day. The current, the revised completion date on that, it is May 9th, and all indications are that they'll be completed by, at that time. We haven't used any contingency money on that project at all, and we expect only to do one change order on it at the end here, and that will actually reduce the contract value overall. The campus expansion project in regards to Block 99, that includes the site work on Block 99, the evidence and energy plant building and the administration building. That has gotten underway. We gave the notice to proceed on April 4th. They took ride-off, began doing excavation work and demolition. The buildings that can be demoed on the site now are demoed. The excavation work for the evidence building portion of the project has been completed, and engineer Phil has been placed. And they are currently placing footings. So, that one is on schedule and going as expected. The, that, that project is phased. The evidence and energy plant is scheduled to be completed in the spring of next year. And then after that, we'll be able to demolish the existing evidence building and begin additional work on the administration building, and that building is scheduled to be done in 2014. I've got some new numbers in regard to the overall budgets for these projects. These numbers do not include FF and E numbers yet, essentially the things that will be moved into the buildings. But we, the, the overall number for the campus expansion is about $28.5 million. And that breaks down as about $4.3 million for the site work, $7.4 million for the evidence and energy plant, and $16.8 million for the administration building. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Does that include a contingency?
It does.
And, and the FF and E budgets for both of those buildings, are you, are you trying to fine-tune that?
We are currently working, you know, we are currently working to review some, some of the, what was planned for the buildings as far as they were designed, and evaluating the, the products that are desired for those buildings. And our intent is to make a recommendation to the, the building committee in regard to that, and that can be presented to the commission then.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mike. Are you going to follow through with the next item?
Yes. Next item, we'd like to request authorization to advertise for bids for a couple of roofing projects. The storage building across the street from the jail, located next to Quicklube, and the Health and Human Services Building over on La Crosse Street. The funding for these projects was included in the Buildings and Grounds Capital Projects Budget for this year, and we're just seeking authorization to go to bid for those.
Any comments or questions? Is there a motion?
If I could just ask a question. Long-term, you have plans to continue to use the SOB building for a long-term?
Buildings and Grounds intends to continue to use it for storage, and, and that use will increase for Buildings and Grounds as some of these projects over on Block 99 are completed. We'll utilize that building more at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm making a motion to approve the, going out for bids for the two projects mentioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize advertising for bids for re-roofing projects. Any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you. In my last item, as you know, with these projects coming online, as we were moving through them, that's something that's created a lot of work, additional work for Buildings and Grounds. On top of our typical projects like these roofing projects, this has added a lot of work for us to do. And to do an adequate job and make sure that the county is getting the best product that we can in overseeing these projects, I'd like to request an additional FTE for the department to help us monitor these projects and the work associated with them.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sure there's additional work, but I guess I thought that's what you were hired to do. This exact thing.
Yeah, the, and when we have taken it on as much as we can, we certainly have, this, this, the way I would explain it is, this is something that is larger than anything that Pennington County's ever done before. The amount, the size of the scope of this project. And on, on smaller projects that, yes, we fully expect that we will just handle those as routine through the office. But this has become something that's much larger than that and takes a lot more of our efforts. And what we ended up doing is just trying to hit the high spots and just try and make sure that we cover the, the most critical aspects of the project.
And I have no doubt that we need to keep an eye on it, bigger project as it is.
Mr. Chair, one, one of the things in building committee that we've discussed about this is that Building and Grounds is going to have some retiring key personnel in the next two to three years. And I, I guess from my personal viewpoint, I think that bringing this person on is important in more than just helping with the building project, and that that person needs to understand how the whole department works, because that could be a very valuable person to replace some of these key personnel that will be retiring. And I, I think it would be, to me, it seems more of a planning process. I know it's going to help you now, Mike.
Yes.
But, you know, as we've talked in building, building committee, we, we want it to be more than that, too.
Yes. Our, our, we propose that we utilize construction funds to, to pay for this position for three years, and then it would be absorbed by Buildings and Grounds. That person, as a secondary duties, would be to provide backup support for our existing office functions. And so, we would have that person cross-training and be skilled at those jobs when we do come to that point in time when we are looking at people retiring.
Any other comments? I guess a question I would have, excuse me, Mike. You indicated that the salary money would come from the construction funds?
Correct.
And are the construction funds integrated into your budget or, or not?
The numbers that I presented to you today actually do include, does include a, a sum in there for that contingency.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mike, I didn't mean to preempt you.
I was just going to add that I did request this position April of last, of '07, believe it or not, and it's even become more critical and more important to this project. I think we can have better documentation, we'll have better training, we'll have somebody who's capable of moving into Buildings and Grounds with knowledge of the projects. I believe it's a win-win.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question for the county auditor. If, if these are being paid out of the construction funds, then we wouldn't add any money to the Buildings and Grounds payroll budget? Would we, would you just?
The construction in progress is a separate fund.
So, that's where that salary would be paid from?
Yes, from what I understand from, from Mike's conversation.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Julie, just a second. When this project is finished, it sounds to me that they have full intentions of making this person a full-time employee of Building and Grounds. Then we have to supplement the budget at that time for Buildings and Grounds to accommodate their salary, because the building project money's going to go away. What, what do we do then, just to look ahead?
You would need, they would need to present it in their budget, and it would need to be approved for the, for the upcoming budget year when they decide to make that move, because it's a separate fund and a separate department.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions, motion?
I would just like to make sure that Mike and Mike understand that you shouldn't have to supplement when you get to the end of this project. You guys ought to be able to plan far enough ahead to actually make it a part of your budget during the budgeting process, so we don't have to go through a supplement.
Certainly, yes.
Okay, all right. I would make a motion to approve the. I would make a motion to approve the position as presented, and that be paid from the construction funds during the construction period.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Mike. Next item.
Mowing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Last year, we had a lot of discussion on this. We put an ad in the paper, and we actually went out for bids to see who was interested. And by the time you figure the cost of the advertising and the effort that went into it, it really wasn't a, a paying item for the county. The contract, I did have a two-year renewal in it. I contacted Barefoot Farms, that is our current company that's doing the mowing, and they're not interested. Well, they were interested, but they could not get the liability insurance. We require a million dollars' worth of liability to protect anything that happens in the right of way, and they could not get insured this year, so they declined. So now I'm back to, I only had one other party that's ever been interested in it, and do we actually want to go out and advertise for bids, or, or do you want to authorize the highway department to negotiate a best offer we could get for, if somebody wants to put up hay along the 1416 corridor through Box Elder and a portion of Liberty Boulevard? So that's the question for the commissioners to answer.
Mr. Chair, I wouldn't think that the amount of money that we're talking about, that we're breaking any rules and regulations, we spend more money on advertising than we'd get out of the whole program. So my suggestion is that Building and Grounds, or not Building and Grounds, the highway, just handle the project.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, it is.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion?
I think the whole thing's $750 total for the news media, the chair, so.
Yes, and I think the other person that was interested was down around $450, so. And the current person that had it didn't like all the trash. I mean, society anymore is, is throwing anything, they can out their car windows, and he said the, the hay is not a quality hay because of all the garbage and trash that is within the right of way, so.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, item 23, Notice to Consider a Motion to Rescind Action Taken on April 17th.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the prior motion pertaining to Pennington County elected officials' wages, so that we could consider the resolution that had been talked about and presented earlier. So that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion is a second to rescind the action taken on April 17th. Any further discussion on that motion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, did the discussion of all of this business meet the open meeting law?
What's the open?
Well, there had to be some, there had to be some conversations here, that I guess that I probably wasn't privy to, and I know that there was some discussion between the couple of, of county commissioners, whether there was more than that or not, I just wanted to know.
I'm not aware of it. If, is anyone else aware of any potential violation?
I'm not aware. Does, does Commissioner Davis have some specifics he'd like to bring up?
Well, I just told you that there was at least two commissioners involved in the conversation. I'm just asking if there was any more.
Is, do people talk about violate your open meeting rules?
Did you understand what I said, Commissioner?
Okay.
I'm asking if there was, asking if there was further discussion amongst any more county commissioners.
And the answer has been given, so there will be no more discussion along this line. We'll proceed with item 24.
Okay, I think we were provided a copy of a new proposed resolution, and I thought I had it in my packet here. What take I did with it?
So this is, is this someone?
Holly, did we, did you run some copies of that?
I did that quickly.
Was, was there copies, or just what was sent to us?
You have the original in your packet, and the second one was emailed.
All right.
And mine came in Japanese.
Yours came in Japanese. If we could just wait a minute, Mr. Chair, until we get that document.
Is that the law of the resolution?
Pardon?
Is that the law of the resolution?
No, it's not. Thank you. I ran that, I ran that this morning, and I had it.
While we're waiting, I will make some comments relative to this issue. Number one, the county commission salaries by law are required to be set in January of each year. So the introduction of the commissioner's salary issue into the last motion, the motion that was rescinded, was inappropriate. So that's one item. Second item was that in the minutes, the substitute motion, which is represented by the motion that was rescinded, did not include verbiage that included the adoption of a resolution. So those two factors caused the resolution that was, or the motion that was passed on April 17th to be subject to question. And so rather than leaving questions, it's back on the agenda. Right, Jay?
Yes, and I wanted to just make a brief comment on the commissioner's salary. You know, there is a statute that says you may set it at the first regular meeting in January of each year, and you would need to do that. So this coming January, if you want yourselves to have a raise, you need to take some action. It can be a simple motion to approve that. Prudence would say that of course you discuss it now, it's a budget season for 2013, so I guess don't be concerned about discussing that matter. And if you have to take some kind of action to have it in a budget, you obviously have to approve the budget by, what, the end of September, then you have to do that. But come January, if you want it to take effect, and you want to get a pay raise, you'll have to take additional action at that time pursuant to that statute to approve it, give blessing to it. So that's my only comment, is don't be afraid to discuss it, and if you have to take action to put it in the 2013 budget, by all means do that, because that's just prudent management. You should be doing that.
Thank you.
I think.
Holly, we have the new material, and Commissioner Holloway, you have the floor.
Okay, just to comment on the commission salary, I think, I think if, if the board doesn't take any action on the commission salary come the first of the year, then it reverts back to the minimum set by legislature, which, which as I read it, would put Pennington County's salary then at $7,233 per year. So if we want something, because it says if you don't take any action, then it reverts back. So I think, I think the board needs to do something the first year with the county commission salary, if we want to keep it where it's at, or if they want to increase it some. And I would support the increase that was proposed by, through the last motion, but I think appropriate time for that is January 1st. You've been given a, a copy of a resolution pertaining to elected official salaries, and I don't know if, if I need to read all of this, maybe I do. But primarily what it lays out is that state law directs the Board of County Commissioners to establish by resolution the salaries payable to the county sheriff, county states attorney, county treasurer, county auditor, county registered deeds. The salaries payable may not be less than that defined in the schedule as based upon the most recent Decentral Federal Census of Population for Counties per SDCL 7-7-9.1. And so, those are actually very low, because the legislature hasn't addressed those salaries for a number of years. So I would propose that we set the county sheriff's salary at $100,000 per year, plus $5,000 per year for the coroner position. And I, and I think that should be in two separate listings, so that if at some point in time, a sheriff came in, or the current sheriff decided he didn't want to be the coroner anymore, that $5,000 would go away. The county states attorney at $100,000, the county treasurer at $75,000, county auditor at $75,000, county registered deeds at $75,000. Then we would say, whereas elected officials in Pennington County are eligible for an annual cost of living increase as set forth by the Board of County Commissioners, so what I would propose is that if the county commissioners designate a cost of living increase for all of the other employees of the county, that these elected officials would also receive that cost of living, although it would not impact the base annual salary. So they, the setting people would actually get the salary increase, but a new person who'd come in would go back to whatever we have this base. And then, whereas the current or setting elected officials whose compensation is below the base annual amount, the salary will be moved to the established base annual amount. Once a new elected official is in office, the salary would revert back to the base annual. Just for clarification, those elected officials whose salary is above the, the current base that is being established would maintain at their current rate, and any cost of living increases that is approved by the board, they would also receive that. So that would be my proposal, and to have a discussion on it, I would make that in the form of a motion.
There's a second to the motion. I'll second it. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, did I hear, you said something about the elected officials are, instead of, it says are eligible for annual cost of living increases. But then I heard you say that if, if the employees get a cost of living, then the elected officials automatically get one, too?
That, that would be my intent.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess from where we were at until now is going to cost $70,000 a year, okay?
The, there's no mention of merit for elected officials? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First of all, I, I'm glad to have this revisited, because I felt that we were unclear last week, or last time, and the, the concern I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out now is, is how we understand why it's $70,000 a year? Because we would be increasing just to the elected officials' salaries.
Well, the sheriff would go from 86, that was the last one, to 105. That's $20,000 right there.
Well, no, that's really not true, because that is not what the sheriff is being paid right now at 86. If you look.
That was what was proposed last week, last meeting.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, because I thought you meant, so we were talking something different. Okay.
So, I think what, where that would come into play is if the sheriff quit, and we had a new.
Then it'd go back to the 86, yeah. Okay.
Nick, do you have any input into this that you wish to make as HR Director?
Again, I'd just reiterate that your guys' job would be to talk about the numbers. My main concern the whole time was making sure that the merits were not a part of this, and it's not, so I don't have a concern. The additional money that would be paid to the coroner, I think, is a good idea, separating that out, just because they are separate job duties, just because the last sheriff and the current one agreed to do that, they still need to be compensated separately. And including them in the cost of living increases, I think, is prudent as well, because they are, for the term, for the point of cost of living, employees of Pennington County. So if it was decided that everybody gets a cost of living, you wouldn't want to exclude just a group of five people. And if it was decided not to, obviously, they wouldn't get one either, so.
The current salaries and classifications, certain number and alphabetical increments.
Yep.
If I understand it correctly, or could you state the classifications of each of these officers that are mentioned in the, in the proposed resolution?
As far as the number?
Yeah, what, what?
Currently, the sheriff's at a 28, the state's attorney's a 27, and I believe the other three departments are 25. Is that right, Julie? Yeah, all three of the other departments are 25s.
All, all three 25s.
Yeah, the registered, the registered deeds, the auditor, and the treasurer. And again, the, what we discussed two weeks ago, the 86,000 and all that, that's step A on each of those steps that I had mentioned. So this would be, again, this would be the original intent of both the conjry study and what I was discussing was pulling them off of that, setting the salary. The person then would become eligible for the cost of living, but when a new person, when a different person took over, then it would revert back to these numbers, if that's how I understood it, listening to Commissioner Holloway.
Thank you. Any, any other comments you wish to add?
I have one, Mr.
Sir.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. What happens to the, the current elected officials?
Without having their salary in front of me, I believe.
No, but do they, they come off of the, the schedule now?
Correct.
So now that they're, they're going to stay at their wage forever, unless we give a cost of living?
Correct, except for, I believe, the sheriff, who would be moved up to the minimum, because it's my understanding that he's not making what is proposed.
No, yeah, I guess the first.
That's what I was talking about.
The state's attorney is above, and I believe the treasurer, auditor, and registered deeds are above.
No.
No?
Registered deeds is above.
Okay, so the registered deeds, and I apologize, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but registered deeds would be moved up to 75, the auditor and treasurer are over 75, the current state's attorney is over the 100 proposed, and then the sheriff would be moved up to the 105 if he agreed to stay coroner under the proposed salaries. would be moved up to the 105 if he agreed to stay coroner under the proposed salaries.
Any further discussion, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to, to go along with the resolution that Commissioner Holloway has written here, but only put the numbers from the last commission meeting inserted in there. Instead of the 100,000 plus five for the sheriff would be 86, 681, and so on and so forth, down to the registered deeds.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and to avoid any further reconsideration and future dates, let's be careful and specifically quote the numbers so the secretary has them the way that you wish them.
Okay, the sheriff is 86, 681, county state's attorney at 78, 802, county treasurer 65, 113, county auditor 65, 113, county registered deed 65, 113.
Any discussion on the substitute motion? No discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Busker?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Holloway?
No.
Troutman?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Substitute motion failed.
Back to the original motion? And did we have numbers on those that are clearly understood?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know this is not necessarily on the agenda, but I think it's fitting. What are we going to do about the rest of the department heads, the appointed ones, when we raise the elected officials this kind of money? I'm sure there's a lot of, a lot of our other department heads out there, and in my feeling, they're just as important as elected ones, and they do a very important job for Pennington County, and a very good job for Pennington County, and they're not getting the pay raises. So I'll just let it go at that.
Any further discussion?
I guess I would just make a comment. I, I think, as it relates to the other department heads, one of the, one of the difficulties that we've had in the past in trying to give merit raises, not only to the other department heads, but the employees, is the, the lack of support in giving elected officials merit raises. By pulling these people off the merit raise process, it will, I, I believe it'll make them much easier to deal with the rest of the employees.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I think that was part of my statement, because I said I'd be willing to go along with the resolution of Commissioner Holloway, realizing there may have been a malfunction in the previous one. But it also, in his resolution, says that, well, it doesn't say it, but it just eliminates merit pay in the resolution. Thank you.
Any further comments? I, I would just comment that I'm, I've always been somewhat in awe of HR directors and the position they occupy, kind of like just standing out there and saying, okay, pick on me, I'm not fair. And in that respect, based on some of my past experience, wage scales, compression issues, all kinds of things occur and are dealt with periodically in different entities, private enterprise as well. And I guess I kind of liken this situation that we're in right now to some of those things. And they're, they're never easy, and never without controversy. But I, I think we, I commend the board for addressing this, getting us current with the law. And if there's no further comment, we will call, have a roll call vote.
Busker?
No.
Davis?
No.
Holloway?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You mentioned that our HR director standing up there just saying, pick on me. Well, he, he brought karma rolls today because his cell phone went off last week, so we picked on him a little bit. And there is, there is karma rolls in the back room.
I hold on, so I brought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item 25, which is a request for congressional support. And even though we have not been briefed ourselves, we would admonish you to not spend a lot of time on this issue. Several of us are already familiar with it.
Okay.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
I'm Tony Esposito, from the LaRush Political Action Committee. And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I want to thank you for the time for this. I'll focus my remarks on the question of the North American Water and Power Alliance. This wonderful and great project to bring water down from Alaska runoff water down to the western and midwestern part of the country is very urgently needed, and we want to request the passage of the resolution. It occurs, it occurs in the context of a financial crisis, which has been ongoing, and the present state of affairs on both sides of the Atlantic is really worse than 2007. Several years of bailout have only made the bubble worse, and it's estimated in the last two and a half years, $29 trillion has gone into this ongoing bubble, and now there's renewed crisis coming from Spain and the euro sector. So back in 2007, the trigger for the problem was the subprime mortgages. Today, it's the eurozone impacting the West. We need an explosion of capital formation and a return to a productive orientation in the economy. The Nuwapa Water Project would do that. It was originated in 1964 by the Parsons Engineering Company. John F. Kennedy and many others at that time in the 60s were very favorable to this. For various reasons, it did not occur. The specifications and parameters for the program have been upgraded over the last three years, and it's ready to go again. And this would bring 20% of the runoff water from the McKenzie and Yukon Rivers, where it goes up into the Arctic Ocean, bring 20% of that water down to the Rocky Mountain Trench north of Idaho, and pump it up into the Sawtooth Mountains, and then down by gravity into the plains and dry areas of Utah and the Southwest. It's urgently needed. The Ogallala Aquifer, for example, would be replenished. This is very vital. The Colorado River, which the system there is so weak that the Colorado River doesn't even, in certain parts of the year, make it to the Gulf of California, which is its basin, and this is a big problem for Southern California, Arizona, and water wars occurring, and, you know, the Imperial Valley has suffered, and it's just not necessary if we can put this program in. There was one proposal in California to take urine and process it to make it into drinking water. Kind of ridiculous. There are other ways to solve the water problem. So this program would put 4 million Americans back to work right away. It would require something like 440 million tons of steel over the duration of the project 20 years. It would jumpstart the steel industry, obviously, the machine tool industry, provide training for millions of Americans, young Americans who need on-the-job training, returning veterans. And more broadly, it would lift up the whole culture of the United States back to the kind of thinking big and cultural optimism we had in the days of Eisenhower and Kennedy. But we have to have a financing for this, which involves government lending, not government spending. So we have to return to a credit system, as many of our great presidents have done, and which the founding fathers set up originally. President Lincoln, President FDR, used this method of government credit to build programs like the TVA program. The Nuwapa Water Project is 40 times bigger than that, and it cannot be done unless we clean up the financial system and get rid of this speculation and casino kind of economics, and get back to American system industrial growth policies. So your passage of this would be a signal, a very healthy signal, to solve the problems. The commissioners know better than I, the state of the collapse of the tax base and the problem we have in the economy. These can be alleviated by getting back to a productive economy, jumpstarting the economy with this, this program, and returning to a regulated financial system where we don't have runaway speculation. And if we do that, then we will avoid this looming crisis coming out of Spain, which is very dire. The IMF has apparently reported that there's going to be a requirement for another four to five trillion dollars of bailout for the euro system. And the following day, the London Daily Telegraph had an article revealing that it's more like nine or 10 trillion, and that money largely comes from the Federal Reserve and, and American sources. We can't have that anymore. We have to stop that, we have to return to a, a growth policy, and avert this continuous and escalating crisis in the financial system. So we have to think big, and I think this exemplifies the great tradition of the United States, and I would entertain any questions you would have on it. But I think your passage of it would be a very healthy message to the country and solve a lot of problems. And it occurs in the, in the history of America of these sort of non-binding resolutions, expressing a mandate to Congress and our leaders in Washington. That's the idea.
Any questions or comments by the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there, do you have a number of what the cost of this is, is going to be to build a pipeline from the Yukon River down into?
It's not a pipeline. There's pipe, there's tunnels, this, this involves canals, pumps. The cost would be about 5, 500 billion, half a trillion. But it would pay for itself many times over, just like the Apollo program and the TVA. These programs have paid for themselves over time.
So you're saying there wouldn't be any pipeline involved?
Well, it's water transport. It's not like the oil pipeline, which has been in the news, but it's, it's, the idea is to divert the water into the natural reservoir of the Rocky Mountain Trench, and then through pumping stations, lift it up 2,000 feet, Sawtooth Mountains, and then by gravity, it would go down, you know, into the plain states.
But if I missed something there, maybe, maybe I did, but we were talking about bringing money, or bringing water out of the Yukon River.
Different, yeah. Water that usually.
Okay, that's 4,000 miles away.
That's right.
Right here.
Canals, dams, waterways, there's a whole system that we'd be involved in that. It's all been worked out originally by the Parsons Engineering Company. And that plan was accepted by the Senate at that time, and was, it was accepted, which is never financed because of the Vietnam War. So it involves a whole complex of things. But I, I would ask that it be seen as, as, as a, a statement of, of, of an overall policy orientation, which we haven't had for many years in the country. The point is, we, we don't think big anymore. And, and we, we have to wrench the United States up into a, a great agro-industrial superpower status that we used to have more years ago. And this, this program has, has engendered support over the years, and it's time for this to be adopted. So yeah, it's, it's, it involves, you know, it's going to require 28 new power stations, 95 dams, 4,500 miles of canals, 46 locks, pumping stations, so it's a vast program.
Okay, so that project in and of itself is conceptual?
It's, it's.
Is it represented by any bill that's currently in Congress?
No, this resolution just came out 10 days ago, and the idea is to develop support and a mandate through endorsements of this sort, where it would be memorialized and, and passed as a non-binding resolution. So it doesn't have a bill number or anything like that yet, no.
So are, are the items referenced on our agenda, HCR 107 and HR 1489, are either of them introduced into Congress at this time?
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, HR 107 is a bill that says that no president can engage in a war without first notifying Congress and getting approval. H, and the other one, 1489, is the bill to reinstate the Glass-Steagall Act, which has 58 cosponsors now and is before the Congress for a vote. And also will be coming up in the Senate, according to Senator Maria Cantwell from Washington State, who sponsored it a couple of years ago with John McCain.
Okay, so they're, they're both viable instruments, and I guess the question would be to the commission, do you wish to adopt a motion to express support for either or both?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I, I always kind of like to hear both sides. I mean, I'd like to hear more information about these bills before we do some supporting. I, I've recognized that, that you have your portion, but, but I'd really like to, maybe if, if we're going to do some kind of resolution, have information from Gnome's office about these and, and, and what they see in them before we do a resolution.
So at this point, we acknowledge your presence, your presentation, and we'll do some further research?
I prefer that, yes.
Comfortable with that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Item 26A has become a non-issue, I think, last report.
I could just let the commissioners know that I received a call from Carla Troutman at SDSU last Friday afternoon, and the Master Gardeners Program has relocated to the West River Eggs Center. They're working on that this week, so phone lines are being transferred, and they will no longer be housed in our facility.
Thank you, Holly. Item 27, building permit floodplain issue, Kim Tesher, Fisher, Fisher, excuse me.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Fisher. Tim is working today, so he couldn't come.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to describe your request? Dan, are you involved in this also? Okay.
Um, I guess the, what started out, we came to the commissioners to get a building permit for a garage and using 10-foot of the 25-foot variance. That was a couple of weeks ago. It was declined because they're saying that there's a violation on our property of a greenhouse that we built in the year 2000. We had all our permits for everything that we have done on that property, all the greenhouses. But now they're saying, no, we're not going to get this garage building permit, even if we don't use the 10-foot of the 25-foot variance because of this greenhouse. We don't feel that it's our fault that planning and zoning let us put that greenhouse there. We had no idea that supposedly it's in the floodplain. So I guess if they want an engineer to come out and check it, we'd really like planning and zoning to pay for it. We don't feel like it is our responsibility to go back to what planning and zoning told us was okay. And we, even after that greenhouse, we put up several more greenhouses, three more greenhouses after that in years following, never had a problem. Nobody ever told us anything. Nobody ever told us anything about it being in the floodplain, any of that. And actually, five years ago, a staff member from planning and zoning came out and checked all of the greenhouses, measured, and said everything's fine. So, what happened in five years that now they're in the floodplain? I don't, we don't understand it.
Can I ask, Dan, I know that the federal government has changed where the floodplain is located in many areas and all of that. Is that a part of this issue?
I don't believe it was a part of this one. I believe it was just an error that the building permits were issued when a floodplain development should have been obtained prior to the greenhouse being built on the property. It is an error, but even back then, they would have been required to get a floodplain development permit prior to the building being constructed on the property.
But you didn't, I'm sorry, you didn't catch it in 2000. Then in 2003, we applied for another. Another error was made. Then like two years later, we applied for greenhouse three and floor permits. Another error was permitted. All those years, it was never caught until now. Those greenhouses are gone, by the way. They've been torn down. We go for a garage that is clearly not in the floodplain, but we can't have a permit to even build that because of an error that we didn't do. But you want us to pay like another $1,200 for this whole business down there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A question. I have a question for Dan. Dan, what would this floodplain development report indicate? What does that show?
Well, it'll be showing probably either two things. Either that it's in the floodplain, and then they would have to take measures to floodplain, flood-proof the structure, or it'll show that the structure is actually not in the floodplain. But that it would have to show either one, and that's what the engineer would have to determine to show.
So, if it's not in the floodplain?
Then they're good.
Well-
Good to go.
But we don't make everybody get one of these. Is there something that triggers it to say, yeah, we've got to have a study here?
Yes, the FEMA maps that are put out by FEMA, which the county has adopted, shows this area to be subject to the 100-year flood events. And if it's that case, the landowner has to, is burdened with that proof to show that it's either in or out, or if they want to build in that area, to flood-proof that structure.
And the FEMA map, has that changed from 2000?
No, it has not.
And?
For this piece of property.
For this piece of property, it has not changed.
And I think our last building permits that we got for greenhouses was probably in 2005, were the last permits.
I'm not saying there hasn't been mistakes made. There have been, these building permits should not have been issued without first bringing the property into compliance. But now it has been caught, and it does need to bring these properties into compliance by getting this floodplain development permit.
So, I mean, if this study is done, the study wouldn't come back and say, geez, you've got to move these buildings, would it?
Not necessarily. Even if it is in the floodplain, there are certain measures they can take to the structure to make it flood-proof, so that in the case of a 100-year flood event, water would either flow through, or there would be some breakaway structures that would allow the water to flow through the structure. But that's what the engineer would have to do. Or if it's not in the floodplain, even better.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What we really don't want to do is to mess with FEMA's flood very much and jeopardize our flood insurance program in the county, which I know they do threaten us with if we mess with it too much. On the other hand, someday we've got to say, you know, we goofed and we've got to remedy it, but I'm not sure how we do that without, and not violate FEMA and our flood insurance program. Do they, does FEMA come in and check to make sure that you had a legitimate survey of the property and that it was out of the floodplain?
They have not done that yet, but they have that option.
How big a job is it to do the survey? I mean, just take a transit down there and say, yeah, if it's five feet above, not a problem?
For us, it would be a minimum of $1,000 to hire an engineer.
Yeah, it does require surveying. It does require doing what they call, I believe, different formulas to determine what the base flood elevation is in that area, and then surveying the land to see where that base flood elevation is on the property.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One thing I'm not catching here, so we're talking about the cost of the engineer, but there has to be some costs, permits, whatever.
The permit cost to the county is $75 that she would have to pay to the county.
We were told 100.
It is 150 because it is after the fact. The county, the commissioners have that ability to waive $75 of that fee.
Can I ask, what is after the fact?
The structure was built in the floodplain prior to getting a floodplain development permit.
Even though you gave us permission?
Yes.
So, we're going to pay another $75.
We get that. We get that we have done that, all right? I think what we just need to do is figure out how to make it equitable and fair. And so, continuing to hammer at us about it, we get that we made a mistake, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think this is one of those deals that no way, shape, or form do I want to lay this to feed to Dan or his crew now. This happened a long time ago. But I think the county made a mistake, and they should own up to it. And my suggestion is that, I guess I'd make a motion to the fact that the county pay up to $1,000 to have this flood study done on this property, and that it come out of building and grounds, or not building and grounds, but the planning and zoning's budget.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm going to second it, but I guess I do have a concern of whether we can legally do it. I want to understand that. So, can we do that sort of thing?
Jay?
I think you have the power to do that. Sure, I think you could do that. And I think you can waive, if you want, you can waive the extra 75. Got to have a permit, got to have the floodplain development plan done. There's a lot of different ways to look at it, but I appreciate what you're having to consider right now, and so, yeah, I do think you have the authority to do that.
All right.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I, I don't think I'm going to be able to support this motion. I would support waiving any fees for permits that the county issues, but the fact of the matter is, had this been caught in 2000, 2003, or 2005, and the various times that you got building permits from the county, had it been caught then, the landowner would have had to pay for this to be able to get those permits. And so, granted, it wasn't caught, but they would have had to pay it then, so I don't know why the county should pick up the cost up to $1,000 to have this survey done on a private piece of property. I can, I could support waiving all of the fees. I mean, you know, whether the county waives both the $75 or the two $75 fees, I would support that. I don't, I think that would be appropriate, but paying, actually paying an engineer, I couldn't support it.
Any further discussion? JD?
I'm not trying to sway voting, that's not my job here, but what Commissioner Holloway said is actual fact, that is true. And I'm just trying to weigh in my head, you know, if there were, if you would have known at a certain time that you need a floodplain development plan, if you were going to put a greenhouse there, and you decide, I don't want to pay this, well, then I won't put that greenhouse there. So, if you put that greenhouse there, now you have to, you see what I'm saying? That would be what you're really out, but now it sounds like there's some of those greenhouses that aren't there anymore anyway. So, I don't know that that's even necessarily a relevant factor.
And had we known that the other, the one that we are actually talking about was in the floodplain, we have two acres. We couldn't move that greenhouse up and over, and it wouldn't have been in the floodplain then.
And if that's true, then that's more of a relevant issue in my head when I think through what you might not have done at the time versus what you would do, but.
But I think had, we wouldn't have known where to put the greenhouse until you had the survey done. So, you wouldn't have known, and we don't even know today whether it's in the round, you know, it's in the floodplain. But irregardless, we'd had to have this survey done to make a determination where you could put it, with or without the berm around it. So, I think this would have been into play either in 2000, 2003, or 2000. Was there three permits issued, or just two?
Yes, there's actually four different greenhouses that were put up, but one, two of them were on the same permit.
So, I think it would have come into play, no matter what, at some juncture. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, you're the guy that-
You know, there is some valid point to state that she may have moved it if she had known it was in the floodplain, to a different location on the property, because there are certain areas on the property that are not in the floodplain. If she had moved it to the very east side or to the very south end of the property, that doesn't appear to be in the floodplain, according to the FEMA maps that we are using currently.
And she would not have had to have this survey done then?
No, she would not have, if she would have known, and I'm not sure what happened back in that time, whether it was discussed in regards to the floodplain or not, but it is possible she could have moved it to somewhere else on the property and not have been affected by the flood maps.
She wouldn't have done that unless she had the survey.
No, not necessarily, because the floodplain only covers a portion of her property, according to the FEMA maps. So, if she would have moved it to the far end of the property that is opposite side of where the floodplain is, she wouldn't have had to gone through the survey.
So, your office never even brought up the issue of floodplains?
I don't know what happened back then.
Let me clarify, or get myself straight. Where in this mix does the building permit for the garage fit? Is the garage proposed addition in the floodplain?
It does not appear to be in the floodplain. It is located in the area of the property that is out of the floodplain, according to the FEMA maps.
And is there an issue with setback relative to the garage that's out of the floodplain?
Were they originally proposing? There was, but I believe they've indicated they will build it according to the setbacks, meeting the 25-foot requirement. The issue is, is there's a violation on the property in regards to a structure being in the floodplain.
And so, is it in the ordinance that if there is a violation, that no building permits can be issued? Is that in the ordinance? I'm concerned about compliance with the ordinance, and then sort of like, okay, but in order to get this, you've got to do this and this and this. The things relative to the floodplain, in my mind, are separate from the issue of the garage building permit and its setbacks. Why are they being tied together?
Because there is, a building permit has been applied for on a piece of property that has a violation.
Does it say that in the ordinance? If there is a violation-
I don't know the exact location where it is in the ordinance, but it has always been staffs or the planning and zoning departments that all violations have to be corrected before they can get a building permit on the property.
Mr. Chair.
What's the wish of the commission?
I'm going to make a substitute motion, that we waived $75 of the $150. She would have had to pay the 75 one way or the other. And I would, second part of that motion is to help supplement the payment of a survey to the tune of $500, not $1,000. 500 because she probably could have got it done for that amount in 2000. I'm sure it's went up some since then, and might, the other 500 might help her do some mitigation if that's necessary. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Right for lack of a second. So, we have the original motion. Let me just be clear. The motion and the compensation relative to the floodplain survey is, does this all tie back to the garage building permit?
Well, the property is all, is one property, and there is a violation on the property. And we do not issue building permits on a piece of property that has a violation on it.
And did I understand you correctly that that's a staff decision?
No, I believe it is in our ordinance. I just know, don't know exactly where it is in the ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How would it go that if we waived the fees and the commission would have the ability to do this, allowed the building permit for the garage, so you can proceed with your garage? But you do need to get this permit, this floodplain permit. I mean, you still could go ahead with your garage, but you'd also need to do this other part. Is that something we can do?
I think that's what we're trying to get to.
Yeah.
I mean, Dan, the planning and zoning office will issue the building permit for the garage once this, once this survey is done.
Right.
Right?
Right, and they correct the violations if there is a violation in regards to the structure being in the floodplain.
But I'm saying the opposite, we go ahead and issue the building permit now, but she still has to get the rest of that violation taken care of.
It strikes me that, given the number of possibilities, and we've addressed them over and over again, of things that people found out after they bought some property, all these things that connect back to planning and zoning ordinances and procedures and that sort of thing. It strikes me that there's kind of a basic violation of constitutional rights here. When you take one action and hold it, I'll call it hostage, because of another action, when the action you're proposing to take is totally legal. Now, Jay, I don't know if that even-
Historically, the ordinance has been interpreted and enforced by this commission on the basis that you need to have everything in compliance on your property as required by ordinance, and if we start kind of ignoring one violation but allowing other permits to be issued, then we're kind of defeating the spirit and purpose of the overall ordinance to have your property fully in compliant in all regards. And so, that's where that comes from. I hear what you're saying, but I, I'll be honest with you, I truly support the idea of you don't, you don't allow more to happen until the homeowner or landowner makes sure that what is not in compliant comes into compliance. Otherwise, you're rewarding them for ignoring a violation on their property.
I'm sorry.
I'm not talking about you personally-
I was just going to say.
-because I understand your situation.
I have.
Spotting to the-
Where does grandfathering come into that dissertation?
If you're out of compliance, you're, well, if you grandfathered in, that's another story, but I'm not hearing any grandfathering.
No, I understand, but I'm just trying to get my mind.
Yeah, if you're grandfathered, then that's called a legal, non-conform- Yeah, if you're grandfathered, then that's called a legal nonconforming, so you're treated as illegal. So you don't have a violation on your property.
I see.
And so a grand, literally a grandfathered issue is considered legal until you change it, you know, you expand on the grandfathering, or it goes away, and now you have to try to bring it back, then you've got to be in compliance again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Here's what I think the problem is, and I'm going to say the name of the guy that gave the building permit, and that was Scott before he went on to Greener Pastures. But if he would have just looked at the map, he could have told, basically told where that floodplain was. Now, that should have been an identification to the landowner by looking at the map, that this is probably in the floodplain right here where you want to build this. But he apparently didn't do that either. So he gave a building permit, they wound up building it in the floodplain, unbeknownst to them, and without any indication from planning and zoning that there was a problem. And so if Scott would have looked at the map and said, wait a minute, this might be in the floodplain, or probably is in the floodplain by looking at the map, they'd have probably put it someplace else, but thereby they wouldn't have garnered any expense at all, other than the building permit. So I have a little problem with it, that it's basically our fault all the way down the line. And I think if you have their property on your computer yet, you can probably show that. And if not, you can get the copy of the map and show us, and it shows right on that map where the floodplain is. And so my guess is they probably wouldn't have gone that route.
We can't be giving away money based on your guess, what they would or would not have done.
Well, but we took, we gave their money away on the guess by Scott, that it was right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. What is the motion?
This move by Davis and the second by Troutman, the Pennington County pay up to $1,000 toward hiring an engineer for the floodplain development agreement for Tim and Linda Fisher.
I just want to make it clear, that motion doesn't include that $75 issued, just so you're...
Does everyone understand the motion? Any other comments? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
I got my mind changed. I wanted that discussion anyway, but, okay. So I'm going to say no.
So the motion is failed. Where are we?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to waive the permit fees. And I'm sinking both of them, the one, so it'd be 150 rather than 75.
There a second?
I'd second that.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I'm going to vote against that, because they would have had to pay the 75 one way or the other. And I'm not sure that we have the authority to waive the permit fee. We might have the authority to waive the penalty, but I don't know if we have the authority to waive the permit fee.
Mr. Chair, could we get an opinion from our state's attorney on that?
Yes, I didn't realize, that's what your motion is, to also waive the permit fee?
So it'd be 75 and 75, because we would charge double.
Should we include the double fee for the 75?
It would appear, it says, "The county board shall have discretion to waive any and all late charges," which late charges are equated to being that administrative fee that comes in after the fact, or the double of the permit fee. Permit fee itself is just standard, I mean, every, everyone has to do that.
I don't have a second, so it'll die.
No, Dan seconded.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
So then we would have to have an amended motion, or...
Yeah.
Okay, so I would just move to waive the $75 penalty fee.
I would agree with that.
Did you get the amended motion and the second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Make a motion to take five.
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Thank you. Could we do the consent calendar on the planning and zoning before we take your five?
I also, when you're ready for me, have a response with regard to the special malt beverage license.
Go ahead.
Want me to do that now?
Yeah.
Just do it now.
You got it all.
We ended up not, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we ended up not contacting the Department of Revenue for the reason that dawned on me as we're walking down the hallway, the special malt beverage ordinance we passed, that's completely within the authority of the county commission. There's nothing that goes to the state of South Dakota. You decide and issue that license literally just from here. However, we did pull the ordinance and looked at it specifically, and for what I'm about to tell you, I would suggest that their attempt to get a special license would not work at this facility unless some facts changed. But as I understood, Mr. Keister, and by the way, I talked to him on the phone before I came back in here, so he knows what I'm going to tell you. My understanding is Mr. Keister said he wanted to go with this veterans organization to have them get a temporary license to do out there at the racetrack what the other license would do if it wasn't entangled in the litigation. First of all, the veterans organization is specifically listed as one of the entities that could apply for this license, so that's not an issue. It'd be $100 upfront, plus advertising, plus $50 every day. I'm assuming they'd be willing to pay that. You only get, the license is only good for 15 consecutive days, not days that you pick and choose. So technically, if they race only one night a week, you'd get about two weeks' worth of racing, because over 15 days, you'd only get two events in there. And you're only allowed two of these licenses in one calendar year. That's all just kind of background. That practically wouldn't work all that great for them, but that's just background. But here's the kicker. A special on sale malt beverage retailer's license may only be issued in conjunction with a special event in Pennington County. And frankly, it'd be my advice to the commission that this isn't a special event. This is just simply trying to cover a time period when the other license is tangled up in litigation. I guess I can't see under any definition of special event as we would probably collectively look at. This isn't a special fundraiser for some purpose, or it isn't the Sturgis Rally that comes once a year for a short period of time, and they're doing it then, or something special for veterans. So it's my understanding that Mr. Keister is going to apply for this, and that may well get on your agenda. I don't know if he's going to change, or the veterans organization is going to change the set of facts in any nature other than what he indicated here at the podium today. But with regard to what he indicated at the podium today, it would clearly be my advice that they aren't entitled to a special license, because their concept of what they'd be doing is not a special event. So...
Thank you, Jay. Mr. Chair, just a clarification, Keister never, he never put in an official application for a beer license?
I don't think he has yet, or it certainly hasn't been advertised yet for a meeting, and so...
So there was nothing we could have done?
No, there was no, it was more informational and just, I think, he wanted to come up and talk to you all today, but there was nothing on the agenda to take action on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. We'll move to item 28, which is a consent, consent agenda for planning and zoning. We have item A, road construction within a section line for Les Tiltrom, recommended approval. Planned unit development review, Salvation Army Mark Kirkaby approval. Minor plat and subdivision variations for the Canadian Pacific approval. And the first reading and public hearing of rezone and comprehensive plan amendment for Todd Munyon to be continued to the sixth, or June 7th, rather, Board of Commissioner meeting. Those are the items. Does anyone wish to remove any of those? If not, chair, would entertain a motion?
May I speak on that, please?
Which one? We should remove it.
I'm Steve Buckles, and I'm also part of the Murphy dish down there, where he wants to put that.
Excuse me. That, what's on the agenda is that it be moved to the 6th, 7th of June.
7th of June, okay.
So we, unless you want to change the date of it being scheduled.
I misunderstood, so I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, so any other comments relative to the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
10-minute break.
10-minute break, moved, seconded.
This is early.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second reading of the ordinance amendment. Ordinance 1202.
1203, actually, to amend section 511W, late charges.
Wait, wait a minute. It says 1202 on the... Item E is the onsite wastewater system construction permit fees. Approval recommended. E. Is that a typo?
Well, maybe I'm in the wrong spot.
Well, the ordinance amendment for...
Sorry, I am...
Late charges is 03.
No, you're correct, I'm wrong.
Holly is correct.
Holly's correct?
I'm just reading what she wrote.
This is the second reading. You did approve the first reading at the last county board meeting. This was changing the fees from the 300 to 250, with allowances only for two inspections. And if it required a third inspection, which it previously did, it would be an additional $100 to the fee. And the changes are on the second page.
Any discussion on this item? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this item?
[laughing].
Anyone on the commission willing to make a motion?
We can clean this audience out.
I'm making a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance amendment 0812-02.
Second.
Motion is second. Same question, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item F.
Is the first reading in the public hearing of ordinance amendment 1203, to amend section 511W1, late charges. This was a discussion that happened previously in some county board meetings where it was discussed that this was not actually an administrative fee, but a penalty fee. And so the discussion was to change it from administrative to penalty. And that was staff's recommendation also, and planning commission's recommendation.
I make a motion to approve the first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment 081203.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
This is a discussion of a resolution for vacation home rentals. On May 23rd, you did pass a ordinance allowing vacation home rentals through a conditional use permit process, but it also included allowing for those people who had licenses to get a conditional use permit, as long as they had that prior to the May 23rd date, which is the date the ordinance goes into effect. And I understand there's some discussion that maybe needs to be done in that, but that was the interpretation we got from our state's attorney, is that it, the ordinance will go into effect on May 23rd, and that's the date that they have to still apply for that license through the state. Well, part of that is, is we're estimating, which is a very rough estimate, 50 to 100 vacation home rentals that are currently in operation in the county that are operating illegally. And what our fear is that we're going to get inundated with lots of applications, and so, and it was part of the, even the committee that was formed to create a resolution that would grant them some time to submit their applications to the, to our office to apply for those conditional use permits. There's also the committee's and planning commission's recommendation to give them a grace period where they'd not be penalized for operating without, with, basically for being illegal in the county. And that is our resolution on the back page. We are suggesting maybe till December 31st. The committee's was actually 90 days, so let's open for discussion to allow them to get their applications to us by then.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Isn't this exactly like some of the things that we have just been working on? And we've had people that were charging late fees to and penalty fees to on planning and zoning items. We've had numerous individuals that are in violation of the county ordinance. Regardless what ordinance it is, they're in violation of the county ordinance. So should we not be putting the late fees on to those also?
Yeah, technically, they should be paying the double fee plus the $1,000, or the $500 extra to get their conditional use permit. If they're in current operation and are illegal, they would have to pay those fees in order to get this conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a clarification, though, they could not have applied for a conditional use permit prior, because we didn't have an ordinance that even allowed it, did we?
No, we did not. Unless they were legal, nonconforming, or operating in the correct zoning district. So no, they could not have applied for a conditional use permit.
So now to, they come in to apply, because we've introduced this ordinance, and to think that we would put a penalty on them for being late when, when they've been operating illegally, being late to apply for something that they couldn't have applied for, I guess I can't connect the dots.
Ignorance of the law is no excuse.
But there wasn't a law.
Yes, there was. It was a county ordinance that specifically says you cannot have this in these areas.
Yeah, they were illegal. They are, they currently are illegal right now if they're operating a vacation home rental in the county, and not the correct zoning district or within a grandfathered area.
What are you going to charge them if they come in on June 1st and make an application?
Depends on if they're operating currently. If they're operating currently, we would have to charge them the double application fee plus the $500 fee.
And that is because they didn't apply for this prior?
Wish they couldn't have applied, but they would have been operating illegally.
But the fact is that they were in violation of the county ordinance.
Yes.
Has nothing to do with applying.
Well, so, so the double fee is, we charge a double fee for anybody that's in violation, no matter, no matter what, what it is?
If the current ordinance requires them to get a conditional use permit to operate whatever they want to operate?
What about they just get a building permit? Do we charge a double fee?
If it's been built after the fact, yes. So this, this resolution would actually not require them to pay the double fee plus the $500. It would still require them to pay the normal conditional use permit application fee, which is the $370.
But really, part of what's different about this situation, whether they were operating legally or illegally, is whether or not they're dealing with the state and the state's time period too, if they have to get licensing through the state, and the state doesn't issue it by May 23rd. Is that right?
Well, if they don't apply, if they're zoned suburban residential district, and they don't apply by May 23rd, they will not be able to get a conditional use permit, according to our ordinance. Our ordinance does not allow that.
Right, but, but part of that is they have to have some... But, but part of that is they have to have some licensing from the state.
Well, at least applied, yes.
So only applied would be okay.
Applied to the state or, or applied to us by May twenty-third?
That's what's still in discussion, and that's what we're trying to resolve through this resolution. Is give them a grace period to say maybe ninety days or till the end of the year to apply.
To the state or the county?
No, to the county.
Okay.
Not to the state. The state is May twenty-third, that's currently in ordinance, or in the proposed, or not to say the passed ordinance.
So you're saying that they have to apply for all licensing requirements by May twenty-third if it is a state licensing?
Yes.
Okay, so then, what is the purpose of the resolution then?
To give them a grace period to apply through planning and zoning for the conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair.
I just hate to give people who are doing illegal acts grace periods. Grace periods are, you know, if you're doing something right, not illegal. On the other hand, I understand that if we get a flood of a hundred of these by May twenty-third, your office will be a little busy. I would make a motion that we give them an additional ninety days.
I'll second that.
And that's only for just applying for the conditional use permit, correct?
Well, I guess.
Well, and, and not paying penalty fees, which I kind of agree with Don, I'm not sure how you pay a penalty fee on something you, you didn't have to do in the first place, but.
The only problem is, and I see a head or two not there going like this, like a bobblehead, but the problem is they violated the law.
Yes, I agree.
If I may, I would, I would say this, and Ron has a special background in, in this area. This has been a cluster, to say the least, for fifteen, twenty years. And it's been a confusing quagmire of ordinance and language and trying to figure out who's in violation, who's not. And so what has finally happened, and, and I know our office appreciates it greatly, is that you've all taken a stance to say we've got to clear up this ordinance, we have to draw a line in the sand, and we're going to allow all of those gray or not quite compliant or not sure about you to become compliant, and you've got to have that certificate from the state by the twenty-third, or forget it. But if you, if you applied for, and if you get that certificate, then maybe within ninety days you have to apply for your conditional use permit. It's all setting, drawing lines in the sand, which we've never really clearly had, so thank you for that.
Do, do they still have to apply to the state by May twenty-third?
Yes.
Well, then, then giving them ninety days really doesn't do anything, does it?
Well, it lessens the burden upon our office and, of course, the planning commissioners not to have to process.
All of them at one time.
All of them at one time, yes.
And it clarifies that, it minis, that five hundred dollar double fee.
Yes, makes it very clear that they would not have to pay that double fee and the five hundred dollars.
And I guess my, my only comment on, on that, to dovetail in with the thank you for drawing some lines, clearing it up, finally getting this all on page is that we're finally getting this cleared up. So to, to confuse it or to backtrack for the extra fee and all that, I, I think just adds to the confusion. I, I guess my recommendation is, is to go with this ordinance, be done with history, and move forward with a clean ordinance and a regulation of vacation homes everywhere, and particularly in this issue in suburban residential. That'd be a very good thing, and you're ninety-nine percent of the way there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to say that I'm, I'm going to support this motion, this motion on this resolution. And the reason I'm doing exactly what I did is to bring this out in front of the public and talk about it. So the next time we have an individual come in, I wish you would say the same thing about those people that are getting this same business, that they're getting the penalty fees stuck on them when they had nothing to do with it. It was an innocent citizen, like he was walking down the street and somebody else runs over another one out in the middle of the street, and that's, that guy there is guilty because he was here.
Most of those folks get their penalties waived though.
Well, not most. We just had one today, it's going to cost them about a thousand bucks in the floodplain, and I, our previous planning commissioners should have said and could have said that's in the floodplain by looking at the map.
Okay, let's, let's back up just a minute. The deadline for applying to the state is May twenty-third.
Correct.
And with all of the electronic equipment and techniques we have, you should be able to get a list from the state on May twenty-fourth that says following people have applied for permits, so that you know what's ahead of you. Am I correct?
We certainly could get that list.
I think you could arrange for it, and I think you could get it.
However.
The crux of this is staff performance, you know, you're trying to, trying to avoid a wreck in your office. So, one of the ways that some offices handle wrecks, or potential wrecks, is to say, okay, we know who you are, here's the list, you are scheduled to be here on this day at this time to get your permit, or to ma, to file your permit. It could be managed in such a way that you could deal with it in a timely manner, you know what you're dealing with. You say ninety days, and you come in here on ninety-one day and say, hey, we couldn't get it done. This and this and this happened. So I guess I would be inclined to say waive the penalties or whatever pending completion of the filings as of May twenty-third.
I guess I'd like to make one point to that, is that if they do apply, we don't necessarily know if they're currently legal or illegal without going through and doing a lot of research on each individual property. Because there are a lot of legal vacation home rentals currently out there that are operating according to our ordinance, either in the highway service, the general commercial, or grandfathered, or within a planned unit development. And that's the issue that we have, is that we're not sure exactly which ones are illegal or illegal until they come into our office and have applied, and we do some additional research.
You can tell them when to come in. If you have the list, you're going to have to do that, so how do you know you can do it in ninety days?
We don't, but at least it gives us some time, other than immediately all on the twenty-third of May.
But what about on the last day of the ninety days? Aren't we just extending it out to the same thing?
We could run into the same thing, yes, that is a possibility.
I think I like Lindell's idea, that she set a timetable and say, okay, if we can get that list from the state, then we know who's applied for the state permit, then we can say to each one of those individuals, here's your time on the planning, on the planning docket. And we could have them all done in the next ninety days.
That is a possibility, but again, without doing some research on all those who applied, to know which ones are legal or illegal, it's going to take some time to do that.
But then, if, what, what difference does it make whether it's the twenty-third of May or ninety days from that day? You could still run into the same thing, you might get, you might get a third of them come in, but you're still going to have two-thirds come in on the last day. And so you're still going to have to go through the same research after ninety days.
Yes, yes, we would.
I like the chairman's idea, put in the time and date on it and say, okay, we've got fifty of these that we have to do, and we're going to do five this meeting, five that meeting, and just put them all down with a date.
Is, is this a decision that might be more accurately addressed after the twenty-third of May?
It depends on what we see, or basically if we don't do some type of resolution, all these people would be required to apply on May twenty-third for their conditional use permits.
All in one day or now, two?
If we don't grant some type of grace period, those people would all be illegal, or if you, I, I'm not they're illegal right now if they're operating in certain circumstances. They would be required to get a conditional use permit. We have to do some type of resolution to at least waive the fees if you're going to waive the fees.
Do, do, can people go in, the ordinance isn't in effect yet, doesn't come into effect till the twenty-third? Can I go in and apply for this CUP today, even though the ordinance isn't in?
Actually, we were just discussing that right before, and they wouldn't be applying for anything, the ordinance isn't in effect yet.
So it's all happens on one day?
That's when it comes into effect, yes.
Comes into effect, and if they don't apply on the twenty-third, then they're, then they're in violation. If they don't apply to the state.
No, they still have to apply through the state, yes.
They can apply to the state ahead of time.
Anytime they can do that.
They can't apply to the county until the twenty-third.
And our fear is, is that they're all going to apply in one day, and they still may do that.
You have to.
They still may do that, but if we do a grace period, give them ninety days, they have ninety days to which they could wait to apply. There is nothing saying that they won't do it all on the last ninety day, or the last, on the ninetieth day.
What do you pick, that's impossible.
Right.
Well, if they all have to apply on the twenty-third, so you've got a pile of papers on the twenty-third.
I don't, I may have to hire or get some senior volunteers to come in and help take applications. I really don't know, because I don't know how many applications are out there, how many illegal vacation home rentals are out there.
So if they have to apply by the twenty-third to you?
Yes.
To an ordinance that doesn't go into effect until that day?
Yes.
I guess.
The drafting may not have been real.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking.
That's why I think some kind of grace period, albeit people might, a bunch of them come in all at the last day, even at the end of that grace period, but at least, at least just start with something that's workable versus starting with something that you just exposed as being not very workable. You know, so the grace period seems to be a logical compromise to try to manage this group of folks that may or may not be coming in, we just don't know yet.
And we could call it something besides a grace period, if we wanted to, we could just call it, they have ninety days, they have to make that application within ninety days of the date that this ordinance goes into effect. And then it's not a grace period, it's just the way, I mean, that's probably the way that ordinance should have been written.
Well, if you just said that there would be no penalty fees assessed during the calendar year of twenty twelve. And then you set up a management program that coordinates the completion of these, processing these things that correlates with your staff resources. And get her done, and if, if it means setting a deadline for an applicant and saying, this is your day, they better be there. I mean, different, you know, I've, I've been around the FSA office, and they, they have hundreds of farmers and ranchers that have to come in and fill out all kinds of paperwork every year. And they set a schedule, and they come in and they do it. This can be done with a management plan connected to the process. All we need to do is figure out what we need to say, what action we need to take to avoid penalizing citizens financially while this unfolds. My question is, what is that that we need to do?
I guess that's what I was trying to do with this resolution, is to give them ninety days. It would waive the double application fees and the penalties.
Ninety days is a guess.
Well, it is, it truly is. But it, there is some merit to setting up a management plan. We could certainly just take down names the first day and put them on a schedule. You know, they can have come in and just.
So where are we, Jay? We don't want to.
One, one question I had, if I, if I can ask Dan, I guess. Those folks that, as we speak right now, there might be some individuals going to the state to get that certificate.
Yes.
And they have until the twenty-third to apply for that certificate. You know, I'm assuming they have a few days to process it and peer and get it to you, so it could be after the twenty-third, till you get your certificate. All of those people that are doing that right now as we speak, all of them are, all of that group would need to be coming to you for, to apply for a conditional use permit, to have that run through the planning commission and then the county commission, every one of them. Is there somebody that has a certificate or is going to get a certificate that doesn't need a, a conditional use permit?
That is a possibility.
Okay, so that's what I was getting at, so not all of these folks will need a conditional use permit. So if Dan gets that list from the state, that won't tell him immediately. Everyone on that list won't necessarily need to go through this conditional use permit application process. Can you tell from that list alone which ones will need to go through and get a conditional use permit?
Not without some additional information, I'm not sure what's all on that list, if the legal description's on there, all that would have to be on there in order for me to know whether or not they would need that conditional use permit.
So you.
Because they may be inside city limits, they may be in a planned unit development, they may be a grandfathered use that's just getting a, the license.
So typically, you would find out which ones need it when they come in?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, isn't, isn't what we're arguing about where the responsibility lies? Is it going to lie with Dan's office to spoon-feed these people and say, now you come in today and get your permit? Or is it going to be up to them to come in and say, I need a permit?
It's definitely up to them to get to the state right, if you don't have that certificate, they better be talking with the state right now to get that application in by the twenty-third. And then I guess if this resolution were to pass and gets published and becomes headlines in the newspaper, that would be, and I understand the association is trying to get the word out and tell these folks, if you, this is your one great opportunity to bring your property into compliance, get her done, using your term. You're right, it should be on, on those folks, if they want to operate openly and in compliance, they should do it.
Mr. Chair. I have a question for Dan. Dan, there's some of these people that are operating in agricultural areas, which is legal, or which, which is allowed without a conditional use permit.
No, they would be required to get a conditional use permit also.
Highway service?
Highway service or general commercial, no.
No, and, and there could be some out there operating like that. But when our ordinance goes into effect, then they have to come in and get one of your vacation rental home permits?
No.
They don't?
No.
So you're only going to receive applications from those people who need a conditional use permit?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Secretary, where are we?
The motion that Ron made was to grant an additional nine days to apply for a conditional use permit. And I'm assuming that's a resolution amendment?
Basically, I believe you even mentioned waiving the double fees.
Yeah, I think that needs to be in there.
And it's basically what this resolution states, with the exception of the date, you would just change that to ninety days.
Yep.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Yes, it is.
Understood by the secretary? We won't have to revisit this?
In, in ninety days.
Maybe. How about the second?
I think I second.
Are you comfortable?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Very weak. Very weak aye there.
Thank you.
Okay, item each.
That's the discussion of the variance recommendation. This has been continued a number of times. What it is, is we're just requesting some discussion from the commissioners in regards to variance requests, and currently, staff reports of variances are written with a recommendation of either approval or denial of the applicant's request. And we base our recommendation upon section 509 of our zoning ordinance, and typically, we do recommend deny. And what I guess I'm requesting is, does the commissioners, do they want me to continue making a recommendation, or do we write a staff report just laying out the facts of the applicant's request? You know, given the topography, whether or not, how much they're encroaching into the setback, existing conditions, all of that is what we currently write into the staff report. And we do make a recommendation upon every variance request.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Dan a question? One of the things that, I'm really not sure why the ordinance says you make that recommendation, because if you're setting the facts before us, I've never really thought the recommendation was necessary, because the facts are the facts, you've researched them, you give them to us, and it's up to us to make that decision. And so I, I'm, for me, there's, there's a part of me that says, why, why do you make the recommendation? Because you're actually there to get the information to us. And having said that, it seems that many times, you guys are in hot water in planning and zoning because you do make that recommendation. And I'm really, I, sometimes I don't even think we really pay that much attention to your recommendation, we just go ahead and do our thing, because we have the facts.
What he pulled off here.
And, and, and we have the legal right to make the decision based on the facts. I'm, I'm just not really sure why we would put that in ordinance that you make a recommendation. That doesn't make sense to me, I guess.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, unlike you, I do listen to the recommendations, mainly because they've been to the property, they've looked it over, there are things that, and I don't go, maybe you do, I don't go to all these properties. And there are some, some knowledge that can be gained by viewing the property that we don't have. And, and we always have the right to say no, which we do quite often, now, Dan, get out of here. So, I don't care one way or another, but I guess I like the recommendations.
Just, just to clarify, though, Ron, I said they were the ones who did the research and presented the facts and the case to us. We aren't the ones going out to do that, we need them to do that. Yeah.
Do you have a permit for that sign? Any further discussion?
So, did, did you get your direction?
It's lucky we can laugh.
As much as you're going to get.
What was, Mr. Chair, if I might, what was the one that Dan brought up a while back that was a real doozy, and I knew that I should have done my thing right there and on this variance business, and you remember, you said, well, I'm confused, I don't know what you're talking about? Well, if I'd have carried on with that, I wrote that down that day, I'd have had that as a reference here. But what was it, Dan, you ought to remember, you made a recommendation to deny, and the rest of the commissioners were sitting there looking at you like, what?
I honestly don't remember which one that is.
It must have been a dandy, so I've forgotten too, but anyway.
So, so really, when they make the recommendation, what they're saying to us is, this is against the rules.
Yes, and against the reasons, I mean, there's five criteria that's listed out as reasons to grant a variance.
Right, and you always give all of that to us. I mean, I, I don't see why, it's kinda like penalties and administrative fee, you know, it's, it's a matter of how you say them. And, and if you've gone through and you've presented all the facts, and, and you've got those five criteria there, why are you saying, we recommend? Why don't you say, this doesn't meet the ordinance's requirements, or something like that? Why do you have to say, we recommend denial? Why can't you say, wouldn't that work for you, Ron? If we said, this doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance?
Yeah, I, I guess it does, I don't see the difference.
Well, it's a, for the person who's walking in here and hearing, planning and zoning recommends denial, immediately, they hate this department, and then they hate the county. And, and so the point is, how do we make it a little easier to deal with? And to me, I, I just think some...
What we really need to do, and we've, I've known this for a long time, and Jay, put your comments in, is in, there are criteria that we need to find to grant a variance, and if any of these get appealed, the first thing the judge is gonna do is, what criteria did you use, and what facts did you find to support them? And we never do that. But the only thing Jay will ever be able to say is, well, I felt like doing it. And that isn't going to be a very good reason in front of a judge.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just might, Ron, and maybe you don't remember, it just dawned on me when you said that over the back, I think in about the first year or two of my second term, we came up with a deal like that, you remember? And we were qualifying every one of those for a while, and then apparently, that just kinda went away after that.
I think it did, and I think the reason was, because at one time, some judge told me, this is crap, you've gotta have some kind of record here when it gets appealed.
I mean, you brought that up to the commissioners and...
Yep, I think.
And we started doing it.
I was very young back in your first term.
That's a very, that's a very good point, and it kinda prompts me to wanna put something together for the commission to bring that back, so that there is a kind of a finding, and so you cover yourself, so, yeah, I appreciate that.
We very seldom get sued on them, but you know, if we ever do, we're in trouble.
And what Commissioner Troutland's saying too, it's kinda like dragnet's, like, just state the facts, ma'am.
I don't have a problem with all that.
Just state the facts, and then, of course, if there's questions from the commission, well, wouldn't that be, mean this, or these set of facts, wouldn't that mean that? And Dan can obviously respond to that and go, yes, no. But, but he's not, he's not, I guess he's not making a specific recommendation, he's leaving that to all of you to weigh those facts and, and consider yourself, and clarify, and then make a decision.
So, we have the prerogative of deciding what is an unwarranted hardship, or what constitutes unreasonable deprivation of the use of your property?
Yep.
And we, we get to decide that without a criteria.
And without his recommendation. Really, and seriously.
That is the criteria, so that's the way we write our staff reports, is based upon those criteria. And the only thing that would change is if you don't want me to put a recommendation, is the recommendation, everything else would stay the same in our staff report, everything else would stay the same.
Do you want to have your recommendation there? I mean, does it make you feel good to have it there?
Shows power, doesn't it?
Does it feel like you're earning your money?
We can't send Dan back to his office confused, so please make a motion.
I certainly can continue to write the staff reports that I am now with a recommendation. In some ways, I feel that's my job.
Put the recommendation on mine and leave it off.
And leave it off of mine, too. Mr. Chair. Here's my philosophy about it, is that you're, you're a hired employee of Pennington County. You're not an elected official, so you should not be making the rules. And you should not be bending your opinion on making the rules.
Oh.
I don't think. And now, when you give us the information that we need, we're supposed to be elected by the people to make that, supposedly, and I know some of them said I'm not really intelligent, and it shows today that I got beat down almost everything I did. But we're supposed to make that decision ourselves, not with recommendations from the planning department. So if you put it out and say, this meets the criteria, end of story. If it doesn't meet the criteria, say so. And then, as Nancy said, you're not in hot water, they don't hate the planning department, they dislike the county commission that made that decision.
So, so, and I appreciate you putting in here the standards for the variances and the requirements for granting a variance that you've got in there. I assume that's from out of our ordinance?
Yes.
I should have memorized that, I'm sure, when I read that whole book, but, you know, if, if Dan writes out that it doesn't meet the requirement of the ordinance, and then lays that out in his recommendation or in his staff report, and then we go ahead and grant it anyway, I, I suppose that is pretty good documentation for whoever might want to take us to court and say we operated wrongly because we didn't follow our own ordinance. Would that be right? Are you following where I'm going? Because sometimes we either grant or deny these variances, and we don't, we don't take any of this into, we don't take all of it into consideration. Hopefully, we take some of it into consideration.
Again, I mean, you know, you have, you're the ultimate decision makers, and you have Dan putting together a staff report with his observations, but it's, it's your findings, and that's where what Ron was bringing up. If you go through those and you find, then that's your decision, and that's very defensible. How a court will come down on, on a case like that, that's anyone's guess, I mean, you never know for sure, but at least you've done your due diligence in reviewing all the information, you go through, you find that you're gonna grant it for these reasons or deny it for these reasons. I don't know what more you can do.
So, so should we be, should we be noting that, that we're gonna grant this because it would result in an unnecessary hardship, and then identify what that hardship is?
Right, correct.
Because right now, what happens is that you deny it, you, you recommend denial, but if we approve it, this is your criteria, or you always have those points, you know? And, and that's sort of confusing.
And you would be approving it because you think it, it was an undue hardship, or something like that?
Yeah, that's right, so...
Dan's recommendation may come strictly from just, it's in the setback, or it's, you know what I mean?
Correct.
Where that has nothing to do with hardship, that's just a, just a cold, hard, mathematical fact.
But, but my point is, hi, his recommendation did nothing, because we still are the ones who need to determine what we're going to do, whether we think it's a hardship, whether we wanna make a, a different, and I still think we generally go in, I, I mean, I know that I read the, the recommendation, but I just don't think that recommendation generally, I mean, because you have to recommend denial on everything. So, to me, that purpose is kind of moot.
And something else, too, I mean, real quick, Dan, something else is that you're setting as, literally under law, you're recognized as in a semi or quasi judicial body at that point. You're hearing testimony come up here from both four, and again, the issues, so that adds to the record. You're getting more than just a, a piece of paper or the mathematical layout, you're, you're judges in that case, so that gives you a lot more information to take in and make those decisions and enter those findings.
I, I guess one thing I'd like to see is when we have these variances that are coming through, maybe, maybe to include this one page with it, so that we know these are the standards that we gotta try to meet.
Yeah, my staff report does list those four criteria. And I do have a brief paragraph explaining whether it meets or does not meet those four criteria in every single one of our variance requests, it does list those four criteria.
So, Jay, if it doesn't meet one of the, one of those four, then we should be denying it?
You should be denying it unless you disagree with him, unless you hear evidence from people here that changes your mind, unless on the record of the full body of information that you take in, essentially, you would go, thank you, Dan, but I, I guess I kinda disagree from what I've heard here. Judges do that every day upstairs, you know, and that's why you argue both sides of a case, somebody's right, somebody's probably wrong, and they have to decide. You'd be doing the same thing. Dan may, may in those criteria say it doesn't meet it, but maybe you here as the judges, you hear something right here during the course of that agenda item that you're like, well, I actually do think it does meet it.
Or, or if we think it does, Dan's right, then we could say, well, it's gonna create an undue hardship on the, on the person, and still have the out.
And that's all subject to opinion, I suppose, is whether or not it's an undue hardship.
And maybe there's more, maybe you delay the item for another two weeks because you determine, I'm not quite sure, and I think there's some information I, I deserve that I don't have in front of me, so I'm gonna ask everybody to go away for two weeks and come back with some more information. So, you have all those options.
Or even a site visit to the property.
I'll make a motion that you just leave the recommendation part off, and we, it sounds like we're going to probably get a little more serious about variances, which is great news for me, and...
What we should be doing.
And what we should be doing, yes. And that's my motion, just leave it off, we'll worry about ourselves.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
But he is gonna, you are gonna continue to point out whether they're meeting these criteria.
Yes. The staff report would be exactly the same, minus the recommendation.
I'll keep you out of hot water, too. A little bit.
Of course, I might say, well, he told me in the back room that...
Would that be an illegal meeting?
Not with him.
Any further comments? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
Committee report? Any committee report?
Items from the public, we have a public here. Do you wanna make?
Now can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for contractual and personnel issues.